So all of our mechanics have a relationship, if you will, with these vehicles. They know the nuances of all the vehicles. It makes it easy for our departments to come and see us. We know we're an onsite facility for them, so they don't necessarily have to schedule safety-related issues. They can come directly to us. The city fleet maintenance.
Good afternoon, evening. It's 5:01 PM. Today is May 17, 2021, and we are in the city chambers, and I call this City Commission Special Meeting to order. Row call, we have Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Luke, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Langdon. So we do have a quorum. We also have interim City Manager Yarborough, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Taylor, Recording Secretary Baker, and in the back, we have our police and fire department represented. I'll just put it that way. A couple of things for decorum. If you have a cellphone with you, if you would please turn it on, vibrate or silent or something, so it's not disruptive. This is a public meeting. It's not a workshop, so there is decorum that goes on. So I know this is a highly emotional and controversial topic, so I don't, though we can't break out in jubilee or hatred or emotion, please do this. If you agree with something, you can lift it really high if you want. If you don't like something, use thumbs down. Please don't be vocal. Don't be disruptive to the meeting. As I said, this is a public meeting, and so we're going to respect it in the format that it needs to be held in. So thank you very much for that. With that, I am going to ask Heather Taylor, our clerk, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. All right, we are on to the approval of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, that the agenda is proved as presented. Go ahead and vote. The agenda is approved, five to zero. Thank you very much. We are on to general public comment. Public comment during the general is on topics. Anybody can speak to any topic that they want to. They're allowed three minutes. But it is, public comment is that. In a public meeting, it's not question and answer. It's not debate. It's strictly comment. So with that being said, do we have any online general comments?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
This one goes out to all the commissioners, especially Jill. You hold the gavel. A lot of us watch the meetings at home, but we cannot hear the comments from the gallery when they start blurring out their comments from their seats. If they must express their opinions, please have them get off their butts and walk to the microphone. Thank you.
And that's one of the reasons that we do have decorum within the building. So thank you very much. We do not have any general public comment. All the comment cards that have been turned in all deal with the topic of Item 4, which is septic and sewer discussion. If anybody would like to still speak to that, you do have time to get a card. They're at both sides of the room, and you just fill it out. Please make sure that you sign it. Be appreciated. And you just turn it to the officer over there, and she will make sure the clerk gets it and it gets to us, so you can be called on during comment of that section of the meeting. Thank you very much. So we are on to Item 3, which is the presentation, and this is a 15-minute presentation, Item And I'm going to ask interim City Manager if you would introduce this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask Mike Willow, Interim Utilities Director, to get up and introduce our guest.
Mike Willow, Interim Utilities Director. Tonight, we have Terry Lowery with us to do an update on the Clean Waterway Act and specifically Senate Bill 712, as it relates to legislation at the state level. Terry has 30-plus years in the industry. She works with Jones Edman, and she specifically has been working with septic-to-sewer programs.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Septic-to-sewer is something that I have been working on across the state of Florida with communities, both cities and counties, for the past 10 years in particular. You may be aware that in 2016, the Florida Springs and Aquifer Protection Act was passed, and that specifically focused on protecting Florida Springs. Last year, with the passage of Senate Bill 712, the Clean Waterways Act, many of the provisions that were outlined in the Florida Springs and Aquifer Protection Act were also addressed in Senate Bill 712, applying those things to all other parts of the state. As it relates to septic systems, just a little bit of background, because I know this is a very difficult issue. I'm a native Floridian. I'm fifth generation. I understand the changes that we've experienced as a state. I understand the challenges that we experience as a state. But we have over 2.5 million septic tanks in the state of Florida right now, according to the Department of Health. That's approximately 30% of our residents as a state being served by septic systems. And while Florida is about 6.5% of the population of the United States, we're more than 12% of the number of septic tanks in the United States, here in the state of Florida. And in Northport in particular, the number is double of septic systems on a per capita basis relative to the rest of Florida. So it is a very serious issue that we are facing all over the state of Florida. I've done more than 12 of these presentations, even during COVID, over the last year, looking for ways to address this issue. So why now? What is the intent and focus right now? When Governor Stantis was elected, going into office, one of his very first executive orders dealt with water quality issues around the state. And, you know, this is something that we continue to refer to, and it really, truly is part of the impetus for the Clean Waterways Act. Because this focus on rapid improvement for water quality, quantity, and supply in the state of Florida was one of the key elements of that executive order. It put $2.5 billion toward water quality issues in the state and established the Blue Green Algae Task Force. There are a couple of other items that are addressed in Senate Bill 712 that were already underway. The Biosolids Technical Advisory Committee was already in process. The Potable Reuse Commission was already being looked at. But those two issues were a little further down the road than the Blue Green Algae Task Force. And there were a lot of things that, a lot of recommendations that were made by the Blue Green Algae Task Force that were important to this discussion. Another thing that has happened recently is the listing of Charlotte Harbor in 2020 as an impaired water body and impaired with nutrients. So that's a key issue. And then finally, it's the funding, because we all understand the cost of this process. It is a very important issue. It's a very expensive issue. And this year, between the funding that's been made available, both at the state level through a state budget, and then also the funding that's coming through the American Rescue Plan Act, this is an opportune time to provide funding for these types of projects around the state. So as I said, the Clean Waterways Act was huge. It was the most comprehensive water quality legislation that I've seen in, really, my entire career of 30 years at Jones Edmonds, working with environmental issues around the state. I'm going to touch on just a few things very quickly to give you some background as to why it's critical right now to be prepared to address this issue. So biosolids, which are basically the byproducts after your wastewater treatment, that bill was already underway, that legislation was already underway, the rule changes were already in process before the Clean Waterways Act. They kind of put DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, put a pause on that process in order for it to be included in the legislation. And so with the passage of Senate Bill 712, many of the rules that are going to come out of that have to be ratified by the legislature. This year, because those rules were so far down the road, they were passed and ratified by the legislature this year and have not yet been sent to the governor, but that bill will be sent to the governor. And the changes that are required associated with the disposal of biosolids now will impact local governments all around the state in terms of additional costs that they have to deal with associated with disposal of those biosolids. So septic tanks. This is one of the big lifts. Septic tanks were never designed to address environmental issues. They were designed to address health issues, which is why, over these many years, the septic tank onsite sewage program has been out of the Department of Health. The legislation, Senate Bill 712, transfers the onsite sewage program from the Department of Health over to the Department of Environmental Protection. That goes into effect July 1 of this year. What's going to happen as part of that is that the central office folks up in Tallahassee will go from the Department of Health over to the Department of Environmental Protection. The county folks that are at the county level are going to stay put through an interagency agreement between the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection. It is anticipated, based on recent conversation with DEP personnel, that rulemaking, which was outlined in Senate Bill 712, will begin in the fall. We don't know at this point exactly what that will look like, but it will be more of an environmental focus on septic tanks in the state, making sure that the septic tank rules address environmental issues as well as health issues. As I said, they're going to start rulemaking in the fall. One of the things that was noted as part of the legislation is that they want to make additional funding available for local government. And as I mentioned earlier, that is something that has been done this year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. Another issue that's being looked at is the Potable Reuse Commission in terms of Senate Bill 712. This was very high, a high priority for the legislature, particularly Senate President Simpson. Senate Bill 64 passed this year. Fortunately for the city of Northport, you do not have a surface water discharge of reclaimed water, and so you do not have to address eliminating that surface water discharge. But DEP is continuing rulemaking on this issue as well. And so you can see it's really a holistic issue that's being addressed in terms of water quality issues through the Clean Waterways Act. And there is, just as a side note, May 27, there is additional rulemaking meeting on the potable reuse issues. So that is coming up. Finally, I wanted to talk about the Blue Green Algae Task Force, because as part of the Blue Green Algae Task Force, one of the things that, that one of their recommendations was to apply those things that were put into the Florida Springs and Aquifer Protection Act on a statewide basis. And the requirements associated with looking at the water bodies that are impaired, when there is a water body that's impaired and septic systems are determined to be 20% or more of the impact of that impairment, then it's an OSTDS remediation plan, a septic tank remediation plan, is required. And as part of that process, you have to look at what changes you're going to make. Are you going to go to a centralized system, or are you going to go to an advanced treatment unit, which is what they call an ATU, which is a mechanical unit on your property that requires both ongoing inspection, as well as your traditional pumpouts and things that you're supposed to do with your septic tank? It also is, requires electricity and a lot of other issues that are costly. In fact, we've done some analysis, and that is actually more costly than having centralized sewer in most cases. But part of the requirements in 712 required a review by DEP of all of the TMDLs and BMAPs throughout the state to look at it from the perspective of determining what the impairment is being caused by. And so that's something that DEP will be working on between now and 2025 for the legislation. In Charlotte Harbor, like I said, they are looking very closely at whether they want to go through the entire BMAP process, or if they want to look at a reasonable assurance plan, which that is driven by the stakeholders, whereas the Basin Management Action Plan is driven by DEP. So there is still some determination on how that process will move forward. So I mentioned the funding opportunities. In Senate Bill 712, one of the things that was put out there was a wastewater grant program specifically targeted at septic-to-sewer options. And one of the things that was done this year through Senate Bill 2512 was create a source, a funding source, because it was not created as part of Senate Bill 712. So this year, they put, they took the doc stamps, which have historically the percentage that's gone to the housing fund, called the Sodowsky Trust Fund, and they have put a portion of it toward this, continued to put it toward the Housing Trust Fund. They've put a portion of it toward water quality and a portion of it toward resiliency issues. And so that bill did pass the legislature and will be sent to the governor for signature. Additionally, with the American Rescue Plan Act, there has been $500 million that was very specifically focused on septic-to-sewer projects that the state allocation is going to be targeted toward. They will be looking at, like with any grant program, they'll be looking at shovel-ready projects, local commitment, they'll be looking at what communities are ready to go, because as I said, this is happening all over the state. You know, Charlotte County has had their program in place for several years now. Lee County is now working on their septic-to-sewer program. Sarasota County has had their program in place for several years. But it's also happening in the, you know, up in the panhandle. It's happening on the East Coast. It is not something that is unique to Northport at this point. And additionally, with some of the funding that is also coming directly to local governments around the state, there is additional funding that can be focused in this area, because the American Rescue Plan funds can go to water, sewer, or broadband. So that is also an option for funding. But right now, more than ever before at the state legislature, they are focused on how do we make these programs viable at the local level? They do recognize that the cost to the homeowner is a key issue in making this viable. And DEP has been working very hard with some of the utilities around the state to make sure that grant agreements incorporate funding to help offset some of those costs. And so that's, that's one of the things that has been a big positive on this issue. I know that was a lot of information, and I tried not to use acronyms, but I've been in it so long, sometimes I do, so I apologize for that. But it is a, it is a huge issue relative to the nuances of various programs, and there is not a one-size-fits-all for any community, and the state recognizes that. And so they are looking to communities to take the lead in how you move your project, your program forward. You know, they want to work with you. And I've seen that on several instances in cities and counties where they are trying to institute the program. And it's very different depending on your community and the needs of your community. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. And it's a privilege to see you again. I have spoken with you or sat in on presentations with you a few times over the last few years. So thank you very much for this. I am going to open it up at this point in time for questions from the commission. And Commissioner McDowell, please, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Great presentation. I appreciate that. The cities that you mentioned, and already have, most of those are...
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Great presentation. The cities that you mentioned and counties that you mentioned that already have a plan in place, they seem to be more coastal communities. Charlotte County, Sarasota County, City of Sarasota, City of Venice, all these other places are coastal. So if all of this funding is going to become available, we're inland. What are our chances of getting any of that money when the coastal communities have a greater need?
Commissioner, it's not just coastal counties. Marion County, which is in the very center of the state, has, has an ongoing program that they're pursuing. Just finished walking through that. Seminole County also has been very active. A lot of the, several of the springs areas that are being looked at, it's not, it's not the coastal area, even if it's a, like in Volusia County right now, which is, you know, you say it's a coastal county, but the area that's being looked at is inland. It's more about the water bodies that are being impacted versus it being coastal versus inland. And looking at what TMDLs might be impacted. Leon County, City of Tallahassee, has a program that's been included.
Total Maximum Daily Load.
The Total Maximum Daily Load. Thank you. Sorry. Like I said, forgive, forgive the acronyms. The Total Maximum Daily Load Program, which is the DEP program that looks at the water body and determines its viability. A lot of areas around Lake Okochobee have also had a lot of money put toward that. So the state is really looking at this more as a statewide effort, not a coastal effort.
Okay. And I think this will be my final question. The water from inland, which is more farming communities, using reclaimed water, which is very high in nitrogen, and it filters into their, their streams and creeks and rivers, and then goes to the bay and to the Gulf and to the estuaries in those areas. How is it determined that it's my septic tank versus the cow pasture 60 miles north of us that is contributing to this load?
So a lot of, well, first, in terms of reclaimed water, in terms of the nitrogen levels in reclaimed water, nitrogen levels in reclaimed water are generally very, very low compared to what comes out of a septic tank. You know, on the order of, you know, at most, you know, 12 to 13 milligrams per liter versus 60 milligrams per liter. And so it's a much different load. But with ag, a lot of what they look at is more the fertilizer use. And as a community, they have a requirement through the BMP, Best Management Practices Program, that runs through the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. And so there were also, as part of Senate Bill 712, there were also requirements associated with ag, with the ag community that have, that have to be addressed through DAX, the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. But in terms of looking at some of the differences, there have been a lot of studies done to look at specifics, like, for example, Dr. Brian LaPointe did some studies in Charlotte County when we were working with them on their septic-to-sewer master plan, that identified certain components in the wastewater, in the monitoring of it, that included sucralose, which is not naturally occurring, and basically comes from things that we eat, sugars and everything else that we, as humans, consume and put out. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You are welcome. Commissioner White, you have the floor.
I just had a question about your acronyms here. BMAP? BMAP?
BMAP. Basin Management Action Plan. My apologies.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Langdon.
Hi. Thank you for that presentation. I'm going to ask you to take out your crystal ball and estimate for me when things may happen based on your insight. What types of rules are you expecting to come out of the fall sessions regarding septic systems?
I think it's going to be a process, and this is, and this is truly a crystal ball. I mean, I don't have any certainty. I mean, we have been through the process before where we have, where they've put septic tank inspections, and then they pulled them back. And, you know, that happened probably 10 to 12 years ago in the legislature. There are, there are anticipated to be some inspection requirements, additional inspection requirements. There was a bill this year that was going through the legislature. It didn't make it all the way through. I wouldn't be surprised to see that come back on, on some inspection requirements. The, I think as part of that BMAP, that Basin Management Action Plan, that is where some of your drivers are going to be. And it's, it's not an overnight process. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow. And we've seen this across the state. It could be five years, it could be 10 years before DEP comes knocking on your door and says, okay, you have to do something. But the reality is, is that we have to start somewhere, and that's in every community. That's not just here. It's more a matter of where and when do you start? And I know that's, that's a huge challenge, and, you know, the residents are going, well, why me? Why start with me? But if we don't, as a state, begin somewhere, even if it's not DEP coming on, knocking on your door, usually by the time DEP comes and knocks on your door and says, oh, you have to do this, it's a crisis. I'll be honest. So no, I don't expect them to come and visit you for the next five years and say, oh, you have to do this. I don't. Would I expect it in 10 years? Yes, I would expect it within 10 years. And again, that is my, that is Terry Lowery's crystal ball.
Right, right. Thank you for that. Is there an age in which the failure rate for septic systems tends to increase?
I mean, certainly, it depends on how well-maintained they are, you know, in terms of a septic system, you know, roots, a lot of other things that can cause a greater failure rate. But from a conventional septic system, it's, honestly, it's less about the failure rate than it is about the fact that it's a conventional system and it doesn't address the nitrogen component. It doesn't address the nutrient load component. That is something that the advanced treatment units do address. So they do reduce the level, not to the level that your wastewater treatment plants will address them, but it does bring it down.
So you're saying that even a well-maintained, well-functioning septic system is still leaching things?
Yes.
Well, one final question, and you might be familiar with this, but some state statute says that households have 365 days to hook up once water and sewage is available in their area. But there's also some vague language about exemptions.
Yes.
Can you clarify that language?
That is a Department of Health statute, and it does not apply to water, it is wastewater. But it, what it basically requires, there are notification requirements associated with it. And it, it is a requirement of the local government to then notify when it's going to become available, and then once it is available, and then there is that timeframe for connection.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there some leeway that's available to a municipality based upon the age of the system?
There are certainly ways that, as a local government, you can say, this is how we are going to do this. And it does provide you with, with some input. And it does provide you with some input. There is a challenge relative to looking at the age of a system from a, from developing your Septic to Sewer program. There are financial implications into how you have to do that. It's just something you would have to know what your timeline was. You would want to understand the age of your septic tanks and, you know, failure rates, all of those things along the way to make sure that your program was viable financially.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Yeah, you had mentioned about grant funding and $500 million. Is that statewide?
The $500 million is statewide in terms of what they're putting out there. There is also some additional funding, and that's the money, that's the funding that's going to be coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. There is also some additional funding that's in the state budget. There's, I think, I want to say it's $110 million. Some of that is designated to springs areas. Some of that is designated to projects that were put forth in special requests, what they affectionately refer to as member projects. And so, there were quite a few of those that were in the state budget this year. And so, a lot of them were Septic to Sewer.
Now, have these funds been allocated and they're ready for applications to be submitted?
Applications, no, they have not been allocated yet. The Treasury guidance on the American Rescue Plan Act was released last week, the interim guidance. And so, a lot of both local governments and state government are still finalizing their plan of how these will be allocated. Now, what is in place already is the applications that came, the water quality applications that came out last year from DEP associated with the water quality funds. And again, this is Terry's crystal ball. I expect they will use a similar process to evaluate those projects that are being requested, even with the $500 million, because the Treasury guidance indicates that it should go through a similar process to what the State Revolving Fund uses. And the types of projects would be that, that the State Revolving Fund is applicable to. And at the state level, the governor and legislature said, "Well, we want to use, we want to focus this on Septic to Sewer." But I expect that those projects that are further down the road, the further down the road you are, the better off you're going to be because there are timelines associated with using those funds in terms of encumbrance and then actual expenditure.
Sure. No, I understand that. You got a timeline on that?
Encumbrance by December 31st of '24, and then I think you've got until through '26 to actually expend it.
Okay. So, we're still within that five-year...
It's still within a five-year window.
Five-year window. And I've got one last question. You referred to shovel-ready. When we talk about shovel-ready, that's usually having water and sewer in place for construction. What is your definition of shovel-ready for having sewer and water? Is it basically a plan?
That's more having your design in place so that you're ready to go and hire a contractor. That's having your plans and specifications ready to go hire a contractor.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have just a couple, and I have gratitude toward the state. They're finally putting some money towards something that they're mandating. I'm so used to having unfunded mandates. It's disgusting. The timeframe for these grants, I believe there is, it might be the one that you talked about. There's a clock ticking toward that. When does that clock end for that one that's current?
The Treasury guidance, the interim Treasury guidance indicated that the funds were to be expended by the end of 2026, but they had to be encumbered by 2020, end of 2024. And like I said, there's still, that just came out on the 11th, so last week it just came out. So, people are still kind of working through the details. But I think that's the target date that people are looking at for those funds. It's a little bit different with the funds that came out, that come out of the state budget, because there's more control over that. But the funds that are coming through, through the feds are going to have a shorter clock.
We want to gather all the funds that we can. You talked quite a bit about Charlotte Harbor being impaired. Could you talk a little bit about how the watershed that encompasses us ends up over there and how that might press us because it's already impaired?
It is, and I'm not an engineer, and, you know, my focus has been on the legislative piece, the lobbying for funding and, you know, public outreach and engagement. However, it, because of, and you may have a little bit more information on this, but there has been monitoring all around the harbor. I know that, in fact, I talked with the new Water Quality Manager for Charlotte County prior to this meeting, and they are looking at doing additional monitoring stations. But from the perspective of the watershed, it is, it is all encompassing. It's coming down from, you know, through Peace River all the way down. You'll see a lot of things, you know, if you go to the Orlando area, you'll see that, you know, headwaters of the Everglades are, you know, up there. So, it is not something, and that's, again, I'm sure there is someone here who could do a much better job describing this, but it's not, it's not any one individual septic tank. It's the number of septic tanks from around the watershed, and you may have a much better view on the watershed piece than I do.
Yes, the actual...
Would you state your name for the record?
Interim Utilities Director, sorry. The watershed that you are referring to is, the Cocoa Plum is a direct runoff into Charlotte Harbor. And we also have the Maia Kahachi Creek, which runs into the Maia River, which all of our canal systems that were designed to keep the city from flooding, all filters out and goes to Charlotte Harbor. That is, that is how the canal system is designed. We do have water control structures, I think there's 106 of them, throughout, to manage the water throughout the city, to keep it from flooding. But that was developed with the general development, and it was a way to keep City of Northport from flooding, but ultimately, all that water flows through and out to Charlotte Harbor.
Thank you, sir. My final question, Ms. Lowery. You had mentioned about restrictions coming through legislation about biosolids.
Yes.
I understand that you were addressing the biosolids of utilities cities. What about the biosolid that comes out of a septic tank when it's pumped? I mean, that is biosolid also. Is that, are they going to be addressing that in a higher cost to those who pump to be able to get rid of it?
Yes, that will, that will be part of the process. It will have to be treated. The land application on it will be a greater issue than it's ever been. And so, yes, I do anticipate that pumpings will increase in cost because of that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell, go ahead.
Yes. Mayor, you had brought up about the Charlotte Harbor being impaired and that they, and then you had mentioned that they monitor the waterways along Charlotte Harbor. Does the City of Northport monitor our canals for these nitrogens and all of these hazardous materials that are creating this perfect storm?
Mike Bulo, Interim Utilities Director. No, we do not, mainly because that's, the utility does not. That's going to be our Stormwater Manager, Elizabeth Wong. And I know we have been in conversations with Charlotte County about them sampling along, especially the Cocoa Plum, in that area for direct runoff. So, I am not aware of any monitoring to that effect.
Do, the city manager, do you know if anybody from Public Works is currently monitoring the stormwater runoff in these canals?
I don't believe so, but I've had several conversations with the Charlotte County manager about they're going to start up a testing program, and they have certain constituents who are concerned about our contribution to their waterways with nutrient load and ultimately into the harbor. So, I think it's going to be a more interesting topic over the next few years. They're gearing up for a testing program.
So, I know that a few years ago, we, as a commission, gave direction when Mosaic was planning to go into DeSoto County to start doing a baseline of testing of the waterways. And we gave four distinct locations inside our city limits. I think there was one just outside of the city limits. I'm not 100% sure. Are those testings happening as directed?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know the answer to that.
You have staff approaching.
Thank you.
Yes.
For the record, Julianne Abilia, Acting Assistant City Manager. Yes, ma'am. The testings which were directed by commission, while we are doing those.
Do you remember where those four locations are?
No, ma'am, not offhand. I'd have to check.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Is there any other commissioners with any other questions for Ms. Lowery? Thank you very much, Ms. Lowery, for the update and answering the questions. It's appreciated. Thank you. Was there any comment or public comment online for item three? For item three?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you read that, please?
The first one is from Dan, who states, "How much were you paid to be here tonight? Why doesn't the public know about the flesh-eating bacteria used to convert raw sewage to potable The second one is from Chuck Wilson. He writes, "Good evening. I wish that I could be there in person to address this, but work has taken me out of town. I would like to address the presentation that is going to be brought forth tonight. I would like all the citizens to remember that this company has been brought in as a paid consultant to the city to present their case for sewer water expansion. They have had to bring in an outside source because for the past few months, the city has not been straightforward with its citizens, and therefore, there is no trust in their decision or their leadership. I read a statement over the weekend on a city's social media page stating that it would take 900 years to complete this project. No citizen believes that, and for city staff to be wasting taxpayer money on such a project would be pointless. To quote the city commission, 'Full steam ahead.' Therefore, we have a paid personality to come tonight to address the city, to try to sway our minds. I would like to remind the commission, we will not be swayed. Bringing in someone to only state one side of the case is not fair or honest to the taxpayers of Northport. We will stand firm in our resolve and our belief that whatever this engineering firm has to say tonight is because they stand to profit from helping design and install such a project in the City of Northport. Our city has serious issues because of growth. It is impossible to put the brakes on growth in a city. The locks in our canals are in desperate need of repair, and we do not have the money. One of the busiest streets in our city needs to be widened, but we have no money. Yet, we seem to be destined to do a 100-year-long project that will cost billions of dollars against the will of the people. As I often like to do, I will leave you with the words of the great Ronald Wilson Reagan. I fear big government, for they have the power to pervert the Constitution and pervert the law of taxation, and they no longer care about the will of the people."
Remember, wait, 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 wait. Remember, it's, all right, if you want to clap, do that. Don't disrupt the meeting if you disagree with this. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we will go on to item four, General Business, item 21-0541. This is discussion and possible action to accept the engineer's neighborhood expansion plan. Interim City Manager, would you introduce, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask staff to come up specifically, our Interim Utilities Director, to do introductions.
While you're finding your place, Mr. Bulo, just a thank you for, I know it was staff who wanted to have this evening meeting so that the public could come here and it not be in the daytime. So, thank you for your consideration of our citizens.
Mike Bulo, Interim Utilities Director. So, what Utilities is bringing forward today is a plan for a neighborhood expansion. And I want to start out by, one, going over the strategic plan for the City Commission's Strategic Plan, Goals and Objectives, which is set for year '22 to '25. And it says to create a sustainable and safe and healthy environment for the residents and visitors of Northport. And then it will, it talks about, "Complete a long-term, long-range plan..." Hang on, I have these right here. Hold on. This will be better. Okay. "Complete a long-range plan and identify funding sources for expansion of potable water distribution and wastewater collection system in plotted lot areas citywide, assimilated local and state data and studies." And then, under infrastructure, it states, "Develop and maintain city roads, bridges, water control structures, storm drains, waterways, potable water, and wastewater treatment and collection systems with creative infrastructure funding mechanisms and targeted investments promote multimodal transportation opportunities throughout the city." So, as part of the point of us getting here, some of it was accelerated with the Senate Bill to have a shovel-ready project. Now, this plan here, it's going to take a year just to design, which will then put us in a position to submit for funding. We won't know an actual cost until we see what funding is available. So, in order for us to move forward, we'd first like to have the wastewater, water expansion master plan accepted. We discussed it in a workshop. It was not accepted. We were asked, given direction to move forward with the first phase of design as far as getting an engineer and proposals for that. And then, so we have done that. We went out, we solicited engineering firms from our engineering library. We received a work assignment back from Kimley Horn, which we have here tonight. And the first phase that was identified is the Blue Ridge-Salford area, which would have the most impact and be the most beneficial for, and this is from the Giffords and Webster master plan, because it would take the most septic systems offline, which would put us at a higher stake for the funding. It would have a greater impact for us to get funding. And then, we would just need direction on moving forward with anticipated construction dates for the other 29 sewer sheds. I will, I will address, I guess, some of those questions or concerns that were brought up before, that it has been said that it would take 900 years at the current funding, and that is a fact. At the current funding, this little area right here would take probably 30 years to do. That's without any other sources, any other future funding sources, grant funding, anything like that. We're just here to present a plan to have Northport prepared for anything that the state may ask. I do have one other. On one other note is, it will take a year to design this. So, we want to, in that year, work on future ideas and incentives. We do have a well incentive plan right now to where you get so many credits back for having a well up to five years. You would get reimbursed... You would get reimbursed so much on that. Our idea is to come up with a credit for septic in the same manner, that you would get a credit on that. Also, an early connection incentive, along with the onsite work incentive, where the utilities would hire a contractor, and all the work would be done at one time through a contractor. The homeowner can have their own plumber do it if they wanted to abandon the septic tanks or do that themselves. They can do that. It will have to be permitted for the removal or instruction of that. And the other thing we would look at is a hardship program to come up with ideas and funding sources for a hardship.
Is that all you have, sir?
That's all, yes.
Okay. Commission, open the floor. Commissioner McDowell, you have the floor. Thank you.
If you could put that map back up, please, that you, thank you, thank you very much. On the right, that map, that has all the 29 sewer sheds?
Yes.
Is there any way to get that map readable, to show some, the, what is the phrase? The geographic reference points on that map? Because I'm even trying to find my house on that map, and it's quite cumbersome. Is it possible to, if we were to approve this today, to
Yes.
get that map updated, put some street names on there, some waterways? You know, not every street, obviously, but...
So you just want an access where you could zoom in to street level? Is that what you're asking for, with the existing sewer sheds on there?
Sir, however you can determine
Yes.
that the average citizen can go and look at that map and with ease and be able to determine where they live and what number they're at least in, that would be a huge improvement.
Okay.
I don't know how you would do it, but...
I have a GIS technician that I will get working on that.
I can't even find Price Boulevard on this map. So I don't know, Mayor, if you want to get a consensus on that, or you want to wait until after all of these commissioners have weighed in? That was the first thing I wanted to bring up.
Just go ahead while it's fresh on our minds. We're going to request a consensus to have the map shown on the right side depicting all of the water, or septic areas, a map to have greater detail. Commissioner McDowell?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, you have that consensus.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Of course.
The other thing is, is there's a lot of, I don't know if it's misinformation, but maybe not a full understanding. If you live in section 29 on that map, they don't realize that that's not happening tomorrow or next year. I've gotten so many phone calls saying, "Hey, I live in this general area." And then I say, "Well, I think it's item number 29. Can we give a estimate of when this will be done?" And I think this is one of your requests.
That's one of my requests. That is correct. We identified an area that would have the biggest bang for the buck, so to say, that we would have a higher chance of receiving funding to have a planned shovel-ready, plan-ready.
Okay.
And that's where, but that's one of the requests, yes. And we would sit down and we would actually prioritize these out.
And when you sit down with the engineer to kind of prioritize, section 29 will be in the year 2150, or whatever year it's going to be. You will also have in big, bold letters, "This is subject to change, and commission approval is required,"
Correct.
so that people don't think that this is set in stone?
Right. This is just a plan.
Okay.
This will be just a plan, a guideline for as we move forward.
Excellent.
That's all this is.
So Mayor, can...
It's going to show the state that we're making an effort in putting a plan together.
Appreciate that. Mayor, can we get a consensus to have staff and city manager and the consultants sit down and kind of give a best or worst-case scenario as to when each one of those sewer sheds would be possibly constructed?
Let's wait for that consensus until all commissioners have talked
Okay.
and we have some discussion, and then we'll
Fantastic.
see about that one. Thank you.
Okay, I got just two more quick ones. Go back to the map, please. On the left, that beigeish area?
Yes.
Is that entire beige area going to be part of the design based on this agreement that you're requesting to be approved today?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a yes for that entire area. Now, if you go to page eight of the scope of work, there's a diagram that looks like What is that red squiggly area?
Jen, can you come up? I'm going to call up the Assistant Utility Director.
City Manager, I'd like a backup, please. It's in the scope of work, in the backup materials, and I don't quite know what that red squiggly area is for.
Good evening, Jennifer Derocher, Assistant Utilities Director. That was an anticipated area where the vacuum station would go. This entire area, this entire sewer shed should be able to be served by one vacuum station, and that would be the area that it could go in, but it's not necessarily where it will go in.
So the potential vacuum station location that shows the yellow dot in that red squiggly line will service this entire beige area on the map that's up on the screen?
Yes.
Including Price Boulevard?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and what that, what that'll do is, with the vacuum station, it allows us to put the system in the right-of-way, not in the road, and it prevents us from tearing up the road and installing a gravity system, which would have to have at least five lift stations for this area.
What does potential design 1A design limits mean in that red arrow pointing to the squiggly line? What does that mean? Potential design, potential phase 1A design?
It's the outreach, is what they're saying, is basically a vacuum system can have a reach of up to two miles. So in order to reach everything in that area, it needs to be in that red box. Somewhere in that red box, the vacuum station needs to be to reach all the area, just so there's one vacuum system. If we move it outside that box, that means another vacuum system would have to pick up, say, that bottom portion where it kind of jogs down and around. If you moved it up, that would no longer be able to pick that up, because the vacuum station was not within that radius.
Do I have time for one more question, Mayor? I forgot to check my time.
Oh, you're fine.
All right. So why are you putting a vacuum station right on the McCoofney Waterway as opposed to more inland in case there's a spill or anything?
It's just identifying an area. It's not saying it's going to be specifically right there. It's in that area. It did identify, that might be a city-owned parcel. I think that's what it was, is a city-owned parcel there, but that's not necessarily where that would end up. That's what was identified, was a city-owned parcel, existing.
And the design would then answer all these unknown questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Mayor, for now, I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Langdon, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'm really glad that you're thinking about some ways of defraying the costs of this to homeowners and residences in the city. Having answers to folks' funding issues, how am I going to pay for this? How much time am I going to have to pay for this? How much, is vitally important, I think, to people feeling comfortable with having us move forward on this. So I just want to make a comment, and it might be as much to myself and fellow commissioners, is I'd like to see us take an approach with a funding model that starts at, we're capping resident payments at 50% of the actual cost, and then coming up with a plan for how are we going to generate the revenue to pay for the rest of the costs of this expansion. And I'm glad to see incentives. I think that's really good. I think we all need to look at surtax revenue and see how much of that we should be putting aside on an annual basis. We need to take a look at our impact fees and see what percentage of those we can be putting aside to fund. We need to take full advantage of state and federal grants, but $500 million statewide, that pays for about half of bringing water and sewage to every home in Northport. So that's going to be a modest amount, but we need to pursue it. I'd also like us to think about, and I believe I mentioned this when we had our workshop on this topic, and that was, there could be some people in the city who perhaps won't have this project come to their doorfront for 10 years, but they might want to start paying for it now, so sort of a pre-payment. I don't know. I would. I'd rather put a little aside every month and have a fund to help defray the cost when it does come to my doorstep. So that would be something I'd like to have us look at. But in a relatively short period of time, I would like to have a model that we can show to the residents of this city how this project is going to be funded, their portion of it, the details around that. One of the other concerns that folks have shared with me is a concern that if there's a lien on their property, if they sold their property, they'd have to pay off that lien. So one of the things I'd like to explore is to have a financing mechanism that stays with the property. So if someone buys my house in 10 years, I don't have to pay off the balance of my water and sewage. That balance transfers to the new owner. And I know that would help some folks who think they could be selling their property.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Langdon?
Yeah, I do have a couple.
We haven't quite got to discussion yet.
Oh, I'm so hot on this, though. I think it's such an essential part of the conversation.
Can I get a few borders for a moment? Could you, could you please ask the gallery and our citizens to please tone it down? Because I'm having a really hard time hearing their chatter between themselves and hearing commissioners speak.
Gallery, could you please refrain from discussing with each other? If you know sign language, go ahead. Thank you very much. It is rather difficult to hear up here. We have these protectors, and so the sound is rather muffled to us. So we hear you guys, because it comes straight at us instead of each other.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you for that.
I just want to confirm a couple numbers, and then I'll yield the floor
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
to round two. In, in one of the reports, I saw that there were 44,000 pre-platted lots in Northport. I thought it was more like 60,000.
Sixty.
I just want to make sure I have my numbers straight.
Total parcels, I just want to make sure I don't have outside.
Yeah, and these numbers came from the Kimley Horn work assignment document.
67, 188?
Right on page one.
Oh, you have it on there? 67.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now, does that 67, if that includes, like Wallen Park and Bobcat, we don't need to include those. So I just want to know how many pre-platted lots either do have or will have when they're built, septic systems?
That's just in the urban service boundary area only.
Okay. So it's 44, 654 with?
Total septic parcel. Just, if you, sorry, Jennifer Derocher, Assistant Utilities Director. So if you look at the map up here, you see it does not go all the way out east of the city. There's an urban service boundary area that is defined by our comprehensive plan. So it just includes those parcels. That's why you might see different numbers on different maps.
Okay, and the areas in green are what?
That, this all is water and sewer. This is all water and city sewer.
So these are our communities, for the most part?
Yep. And this is Herring Creek over here and 41. They have water and sewer 100%. The rest of the city here does not. You see, there's some pockets here that have
Right.
water and sewer. Those are the schools mostly.
Okay, good.
But these are the quarter-acre lots.
Thank you. Okay, so 44,000 pre-platted lots in the service area.
Correct.
The percentage of those homes on septic, so I think, again, in that, on that same page, 16,000 were of those 44 are built and already on septic? Is that how I'm to understand that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
All right, so this is going to take a year to design, and you're going to have all the answers after that year on what the costs are going to be to the homeowners. Is that part of the design phase?
Yes, once we get the engineer's estimate of probable cost, then we can work on that actual cost of it.
Right.
So we would have those numbers once we get the engineer's estimate of probable cost. And we would have that probably closer to the 90% design. At that point, we would be pretty close to knowing the cost of it.
And that would be at the cost of your 474,000, correct? The design?
Yes, yes, that's all included in the design proposal, yes.
So it's going to cost us a half million dollars to get those answers in the design phase?
Excuse me? Thank you.
What fund is that coming out of?
Currently under surtax.
I'm going to save that one for comments, but we were told, you know, five years, 10 years, then they'll be knocking on the door. I just don't see the rush at this point right now. And we'll discuss it, and we'll have discussions, but I, I got a lot of, lot of thoughts on my mind jumping again, so I'll save those for comments. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you have the floor.
Okay, so, yeah, Vice Mayor asked for my questions. This'll take about a year to design, and it will be brought back, correct?
Yes, it will be brought back.
It will be brought back for us, and we'll have more discussions then about it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's going to be at least a year from now?
Yes.
All right.
It'll be, yeah, at least 10 months.
Okay. And then, yes, the funding sources will have all our options available at that time. Would you know, the two major projects that I think were mentioned and that I'm familiar with, the Phillippe Creek conversion, that started, when that started, was that like 20-something years ago?
Yes.
And are they, I think they're nearing the completion now, so is that how long that took?
Yeah, was that 2003 when they first started study?
Ma'am, can you please get on microphone?
Yes, thank you.
Terry Lowery, John Sudman's. On the Phillippe Creek, that's something that's been ongoing, like you said, almost 20 years. I think 2003, I believe, I'm not positive of that, but 2003. I know in 2005, I want to say that they finished the study and then started the process. And it's been an ongoing process since, since that time. And Sarasota County recently looked at redoing the southern portion of their planning area, even though that also was studied at the time. It's, it's a very long process.
Okay. And that was, that was septic to sewer?
That was septic, yeah. Yes, ma'am, that was septic to sewer.
Right. And that, those hookup costs ranged around 10.5? Isn't that what they were?
That's Charlotte County. Sarasota County's was lower because of when they started. I did have a conversation with a gentleman in Sarasota County not too long ago. I think their current costs or their assessment are around $3,000. I would have to look. He said those costs are low, and they are reevaluating that cost. Just separate issues, I've seen everything from Martin County's $12,000, Citrus County's around $5,800. It's variable around the state, depending on... It's variable around the state, depending on, you know, what each community is doing and how they're approaching it.
Okay, and would you be able to answer about, again, funding sources? That Sarasota County had money, a loan, an interest-deferred loan from HUD or the, I can't remember what it's called.
See, there's a variety of sources that can be used for these types of projects. State revolving loan fund is one, which is, their interest rates at this point are extremely low. In fact, Citrus County is doing a nine-phase program for their Homasassa area around Homasassa Springs. They're doing a 10-year program for the nine phases, and they know they'll never make that. You know, I mean, to do a project in anything under two years is almost unheard of between design and construction. But they're doing that in order to be able to be prepared, to be able to go after that next loan piece. They're also getting grant dollars from Southwest Florida Water Management District, associated with water quality funding. There are programs through CDBG for low-income areas. There are programs for USDA for certain rural areas. There are grant dollars that can come through federal appropriation. There were some requests that just went in recently for that. There are, the total maximum daily load, caught myself. That program has a portion where if you have a TMDL that you're impacting, you're doing a septic sewer program, that you can apply for funding that is specifically for homeowner costs. There are certain grants, if you get, say, a legislative appropriation, that you can include all different costs in there. We just did a project up in Clay County, also in Inland County, where it was a smaller project, but the homeowner costs were considered part of the grant. So there's a lot of different types of funds that different projects become eligible for, depending on the demographics of the community.
Okay, all right. And I think that is, wait a minute. And, oh, I'm sorry. What time period did you say? This is for Mr. Vulo. What time did you say the timeframe to complete this one parcel would be?
At the current funding, it would take 30 years to complete.
Just this one little section?
Just that one section, yes. At the current funding that we have now.
Oh, okay, that's not, that's without everything that was discussed?
Correct, that's without putting a plan together, submitting for all the grants and funding and looking at that. And we could do that with a plan. We can then look at all those avenues.
Right.
Without a plan to move forward, it's hard to look at that.
Okay, and this area was chosen, you said, because of the number of lots that are already developed?
Correct.
And is it also because it sits between waterways? Does that have anything to do with it, or no?
No, it was, it would take them, it was, it would take the most septic systems offline.
Okay.
And it was, you know, that, because with this Senate bill and the Clean Waterway Act, they're wanting to remove those septic tanks. And then our approach was just to, this was the area that had the biggest bang for the buck, that would put us up in contention with getting some funding.
Okay.
Because it would take more of them off. It was a dense area.
Okay, and again, when you bring back the design plan, those funding sources would be part of that plan or whatever available at that time?
Yes, we will start looking at that with the engineer as they're designing it, and we would start reaching out to find out about all these.
And that would include all those funding sources that were just mentioned?
Yes.
Like what is, what can be, what can't be at this time? We're too late or whatever?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kind of pick up where she took off. The cost of the plan and the timeline of this plan, if it were done now, and then we set it on a shelf, how long is that shovel-ready plan good for?
Typically, they're good for five years, and then you would just have to have them reevaluated. Basically, after the five years, it kind of puts them back at a 90%, and they would just review them to make sure everything is current. Nothing has changed as, you know, after that five-year period that they would have to implement in the plan. So it would just kind of be a brush-up after a five-year period.
And what about the cost of the plan? If we put this off for five years, would it be more than what the plan costs we're looking at currently, right now?
I would say yes. This keeps increasing year after year.
Okay. I understand the thinking within the city has been convert the septic tanks. This commission has really pushed toward going commercial, making sure commercial was addressed. So by having a shovel-ready area prepared to have a plan ready so they don't come down with a hammer on us, is having a shovel-ready, commercial area acceptable? Or does it have to be shovel-ready for residential?
For what we're talking about now, it's going to be for septic tanks, shovel-ready project for septic tanks. That's what, they're looking at the environmental impact and the nitrogen load. And that's where the basin management action plans come in and the TMDL. And basically, that refers back to our runoff with Charlotte Harbor. And I don't have the crystal ball, and I don't know when they're going to say, you know, you're the, you're creating this impact, whether we are or aren't. There are plans in place now to start some testing with Charlotte County. So how long that takes, what they, what comes out of that, I don't know.
In my opinion, that's a definite must. I mean, if you're not testing, they can point the finger at you all the time. And I've received those phone calls, those emails, those texts from the people down there saying, you're the problem. So we have to have that testing as soon as possible so we have protection for ourselves. Or if we're guilty, we're going to have to tighten our belt even more. When I had my one-on-one with you guys, there was a timeline for a grant. And that is one of the reasons why we needed a meeting now was because of that timeline. Can you explain that to me, please?
Terry Lowery, Joan Zedmonds. So there are several different avenues for funding. And often, the, there are multiple grant funds that are applied to the same project. And oftentimes, with different timeframes associated with them. From the, there are a couple of things that you have going here. The current project that you're looking at with the year design, you will all, you will have some things in place from a design perspective that you might be able to look at this funding cycle with what's coming through right now, depending on how long that they have to get the grant materials out. That's one set of circumstances. The other issue is legislative appropriation. So legislative session starts in January of next year. Committee meetings will start probably late August, early September. You want to have something underway in order to be able to make that ask legislatively. You want to have some timeline on your design to be able to say, okay, we're asking for this funding. Because by the time you ask for, you submit the grant application, they select you, you execute the agreement between you and the agency, it's several, it's several months. So you will be a ways down the design process by the time that that happens. And they do like to, they prefer to actually fund construction over design. It's much more difficult to get a design grant than it is to get a construction grant. The other, the other piece of that is if SWIFTMUD, if the Southwest Florida Water Management District opens a little bit broader to allow for septic to sewer in other areas of the district, other than the springs areas, then their applications are due October, first Friday in October. And so there's a variety of different milestones. But that's, that's why moving forward becomes important, you know, for your consultant to get that design process started. Then it shows the agency that you're moving down the path. But those are some, those are just a few of the timelines that you would be looking at from a grant perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Vulo, if this plan went ahead, but you receive no grant, there's no funding coming to you, you're not awarded anything, that plan would just sit there, correct?
Well, that would be up to commission. And it would come up to, we could do a smaller portion to set a, set an amount, and you could just do a smaller portion. And whatever funds are available, you may not be able to start construction of the entire thing. But it, depending on what funding is available that we, you know, instead of doing the big map, you can do a portion of that map. And the first thing that'll be, have to be built is the vacuum station. And then, you know, you can always build out from there. So it can be, within this area, it can be phased in that area and build out from there. And it all depends on the fund.
Depending upon the funding, the grants or whatever. But you have to have that plan in order to see what the cost is so that we can try to figure out funding. And that funding, it doesn't come from tax dollars. That comes from the users of utilities, correct? I mean, outside of grants and that sort of stuff. I mean, you have a certain portion of surtax that you receive yearly, but outside of that, it's us users who put the money in the kitty, correct?
They invest. Jen knows all the funding sources with them.
Hi, Jennifer Derocher, Assistant Utilities Director. Yeah, currently, right now, the only funds that we have designated for the expansion of water and sewer is through the surtax that we receive on an annual basis. And that's why thus, it's a $30 million project. It would take 30 years because we get approximately $1 million a year currently. That's what it's slated for.
Okay, and this project is, would be funded out of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, your allotment is going to that. I'm in agreement that probably the knock on the door is five years away. But as she stated, that then is critical. I mean, there, you don't have the timeframe. So by doing this, it's okay. If you don't have the funding, that it sits there, you can always come back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because definitely hardship programs are vitally necessary to frame the cost. I mean, we've already stated that as a commission. It's, while this commission's sitting here, it's not going to be, going to be as least of a hardship as possible. Second round, go ahead, Commissioner McDowell.
I'll be quick, Mayor, thank you. Exhibit C in the scope of work, it says that the notice to proceed will be issued May 3rd. Obviously, we're past May 3rd. We don't have approval for this to proceed. Are you guys going to have to update Exhibit C?
Yes, that was the original submittal.
Correct, so seeing that the final design and drawings, the 90% is slated to end, according to the way it's written now, January of '22, what do you expect that new revision to look like?
For the contract timeline?
Correct, that's what Exhibit, it says here, production schedule. It's page 14 of the contract, I mean, of the scope of work.
We would have to get with Kimley-Horn on that. I don't think the actual cost of the contract's going to change. The timeline's just going to change.
Okay.
They're just going to shift their timeline. Or they're going to keep their same amount of lot of time. It'll just shift out.
Okay, do you need consensus if we are to approve this? Do you need consensus to change this? Or is that something that will automatically happen?
City manager, do you want to address that question? Because I believe she's talking about the scope instead of the contract.
We're just making the needed adjustments based off of the, when it's if, and when we get approval to move forward, we'll adjust those exhibits, those attachments.
So you don't need a consensus?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell.
You're welcome. All right. I've made no bones about it. I am more in favor of doing the commercial than doing residential. It's been spoke about for four years now with me. Could I please get an idea of what it will cost to do the design for either Gateway South? I'm sorry, the Gateway area, the Panacea area, and the Springs area? That's in the Camoyen Study that we had just discussed. So I need this information to be able to move forward with making a decision on this.
Yes.
Sorry, Jennifer Derocher, Assistant Utilities Director. Actually, Sumter Boulevard is, we just received 90% plans. So that is almost done.
That'll be coming back in June.
That's your gateway.
We should have 100% plans in June.
Yes, ma'am. Toledo Blade was complete. It was 90%. Once we get direction to move forward on that one, it would just be another step, just like we had to do with Sumter to get it to 100%, back up to 100%. And?
Panacea.
Well, that was Panacea.
That is Panacea.
Oh, sorry. You guys call it Toledo Blade, I call Panacea. Okay, so Panacea is at 90% right now, design complete?
Yes, ma'am. We would need to, you know, if we were directed to move forward with that one, we would, it would just be that little piece, the little 10% left.
And what about the Springs?
And the Springs, to my knowledge, they're at 90% as well. That is a parks project, and that one, I believe, was discussed about a month ago here with the commission, about 90%.
So if we're at 90% now, about how much would you need to get to 100% of design plans?
For Panacea?
If your engineering is about 15% total construction price, then do 10% of that. So if you figure total construction price is $4.5 million, design would be about $450,000 of that, 10%, probably $50,000 to $100,000, if I had to guess.
And that's just for one area?
That's just for Panacea.
Excellent, thank you for those answers, okay.
That's the swag now.
I get it, I get it, I get it. So if we were to approve, part of your request of us today is to approve the master plan. By no means, if we approve the master plan, we would have to have a separate to move forward with the first phase for design. So if we were to approve the master plan, okay, we've got a master plan, yay! And we approve that with those minor changes, would that look favorably to the state that we are doing something for our septic tanks? Even though we haven't done any, outside of the design part, this is specific to the master plan?
I mean, it would, Terry Lowery, Joan Zedmonds. It would certainly be a start. I mean, it would, it's better than nothing. But it would not put you at the top of the list relative to the funding for places that have already gotten to a, gotten through the design process. So it would just depend on what applications came in. It would depend on how many other folks are asking, you know, and have their hand out. Just some of, you know, this, and this is just Joan Zedmonds. You know, we're engaged in a, in a project in Okeechobee Utility Authority and Clay County and Jackson in a, in a project in Okeechobee Utility Authority, and Clay County, and Jacksonville Electric Authority, JEA. In Volusia County, we're under design.
So that's a great point. These other places are already in the design phase, if not completed, we're just starting. Do we have to have the design done before we can do the grants? Yes, yes.
Yes.
So we're not going to get this money anyhow.
No, when the funding cycle opens coming up, we would be eligible after this year, when that legislative cycle opens, we would be able to submit for the funding.
But the design isn't completed then. We're only at the very beginning, so the design's not complete, so we wouldn't be eligible.
12 months you would be able to, the next grant cycle.
Yes, I mean, this would be, on, it, it takes time. The one thing I can tell you about grant-funded projects is that they take longer and cost more. I mean, that's, that is just a fact, they take longer and cost more because you're, I worked on a septic to sewer, actually, it was an entire wastewater project in, up in Putnam County, where it was a combination of a new plant and, and septic tanks. I literally worked on it from 1999 until 2014, literally, because it included seven different legislative appropriations, it included USDA rural development funding, it included an EPA federal appropriation, it included an SRF state revolving loan fund. And to be able to package all that up and keep all of those things going is, is a huge challenge. And that first step was the biggest challenge. Now, in Putnam County, they are now receiving a, quite a bit of funding from St. John's River Water Management District and the state to continue on those phases. The first lift is always the hardest and takes the longest. And that's just the experience I've seen all over the state. And so.
Thank you. Mayor, I believe that is it. Thank you. Commissioner Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to really confirm one thing. So when we talk about having a shovel-ready project which qualifies us to apply for federal and state funding, this design project gives us that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I read in the news that there are a lot of high-visibility sewage spills in neighboring communities that have public water and sewage. What would we need to do here in Northport to prevent, number one, why does that happen? And what would we need to do here to prevent that from happening?
As the sewer spills, well, one of the things we did with it was a lesson learned from Irma, we lost power, and we were without power for a couple days. We had 92 lift stations that were down, out of 110, out of power. We had 17 bypass pumps and four generators. That's not to include the generators that are already at the master stations, which there's one, two, three, four of them. So we worked 24 hours around the clock, and we moved those pumps to station to station. One of the things we have done since then, as part of the lesson learned, is we are installing these permanent bypass pumps at these lift stations. And as part of all the new construction, we did receive grant funding for that, we submitted with the grant funding, and we received six of them, I believe it was, six pumps for this year, $600,000 to install those permanent bypass pumps at these stations that were, Department of Economic Opportunity came in, and we toured, and we went to all these stations. So as we move forward, we have a funding mechanism where we are funding four of those every year to be installed. And, you know, as the grants come in and all that comes in, we're trying to get all these permanent bypass pumps installed at these lift stations to keep everything moving through the process. And we did not have a spill during Irma.
Right, right. Good, yeah, that's good news. There are three different systems that are under evaluation. It looks like the vacuum system is the one that would be predominant, according to the master plan. How do those fare in terms of failure compared with the others? Are they more prone to failure, less prone?
No, it's a newer technology, they've come a long way, they started in the 80s.
If I could weigh in a little bit.
Yeah.
Apologize, Mike.
Nope.
The benefit of the vacuum is if you, the vacuum system's like a, like a circuit breaker, if it has a leak or a hole, it loses vacuum, and therefore, you kind of know almost instantaneously that you've got a problem somewhere in the line. The low diameter stuff, low diameter collection system, it, it's got some Achilles' heels, some of it is, if you lose power at the home, so you will lose your grinder pump system. The other thing is, if there's a power outage, and everything comes on simultaneously, now you've got all these homes trying to pump into these small little pipes, and that's problematic too. I don't remember what the third technology.
It was gravity.
Oh, gravity. And the gravity's just, your traditional, but it's very expensive, and you got to rip up stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's problematic. So those are kind of the pros and cons of each of those technologies.
Right, ongoing operating and maintenance?
Correct, that's where the LPS you're referring to, the low-pressure sewer systems, I'm very familiar.
That's not really an option, though.
It's a high-maintenance
Yeah.
option, and those do tie into the homeowner's power source in order to run those.
Right.
So there is some complications with that as well, because those grinder pumps have to have a power source to pump off-site. And from my experience in the past, and I've worked with those systems, it's a lot of maintenance, and the newer technology has come a long way and has proven itself with these vacuum systems. And not only that, but even with a gravity system, on a gravity system, of course, it's gravity, so you got to have a certain elevation, you got to go deep, and the cost to put that in, on a vacuum system, everything is just one, three foot, and it runs that level.
They used it in downtown Sanford, as well as the Keys, because the, because the ground there, vacuum has been used down there.
Yeah.
It's got a, a pretty proven history.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, while we're on that vacuum system, how much does that vacuum station cost? You got any idea, off the top of your head?
Roughly a million dollars.
And then you sort of talked back and forth, we didn't have no costs on this project, but what I picked up was, you said it would take 30 years at a million dollars a year, so you're insinuating this is going to be about a $30 million project? Approximately, is that a good guess? I'm not holding you to it, I'm just saying.
That's, yes.
So best guess, okay. Now, my last question, well, no, it's not, second to last question. How many of these grants that people have received have fully funded one of these projects? Fully funded?
Fully funded?
There's a reason for this question.
I don't know if they've fully funded.
I don't think they have either, but I'm asking it anyways.
Yeah, good question.
I am not aware of any that have been fully funded. In 1993, the town of Swanee, which was a low-pressure system, was funded at about 90%. That was 793 connections, that was in 1993, I'm aware of that one. When I worked on Putnam County, the wastewater was funded at about 75%. There's some grant dollars down around Lake Okeechobee right now, that's around 60%, maybe 70%, depending on, you know, what the, I don't know what the actual costs are going to be on that project.
No, I understand.
Those haven't come in.
And, and I was sort of asking that a little bit sarcastically, because if we were to receive a grant, then we have to come up with the extenuating funds to complete this project. So if we got a grant of 5 million, the city would have to come up with 25 million, according to the approximate cost, and fit it in within those timelines, or lose that grant funding.
So the, one of the things that Mr. Vulo mentioned was the prospect of phasing and being, and that's, that happens on a lot of projects, just because of that, if it's a $30 million project, you're probably not going to get, you know, all of that in one legislative session or from, from one grant. And so you look at, you know, what, how do you subdivide that area to be able to take it off, you know, do it in bite-sized chunks?
Sure, piecemeal it.
Right. And again, that's why I go back to, grant-funded projects cost more and take longer, because when you piecemeal something, it does generally cost more, and then you have to wait until you get the next grant in place to, to move that, that process forward. So it, it is a challenge. I would, I would love it if the state would come up with a, in the same way that they fund transportation, figure out some source of funding for water and wastewater utilities, because it's, it's, it is that unseen infrastructure that, you know, there are no potholes that you see like you do with roads, it's a different animal.
And my final question is, how much does utilities have set aside for this project?
Just what's in SRTAX now.
And how much is that?
A million dollars a year, is what's allocated in SRTAX.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
He asked one question that I was going to ask, and that was about the, the plan. If you, if we did approve this plan, doesn't mean the whole area's being done, you would more than likely phase in various areas if you could get the funding.
And that's going to be up to commission direction, and that's going to be part of, Commissioner Langdon said, if we set a cap and said, okay, the max is 12, 13,000, whatever it is, and then we could work back from there and figure out the area that can be done, and that's how we can figure out the phasing of it. Once we have the engineering plan of, of the cost, probable cost, that's where we could kind of back into some of these to figure this out, and we would then bring back something to say, you know, and also incentive plans, and, because once we set a cap in 13,000, and then you have a well credit, well, that would back off of that 13,000, and a septic credit, and that would back off of that, after that well credit, you would back that then down, so you may end up at 10,000. That, you know, I'm just, those are plans that we could work on, and we probably will end up phasing a couple of these, once we know and figure out some funding sources.
Okay, because I don't see where you're going to end up with that much money that quickly. So, you know, to match a grant, or to take care of what's left with the grant. We're working toward having a plan so that the state doesn't come in with the hammer on top of us. So you said it's going to take a year for the plan to be developed before Kimley Horn finishes. So during that point in time, are we still safe from the state because they know we're working on a plan?
Oh, yeah, we could show our contract, we could show everything that we're doing, and that we have an engineer working on it, and, you know, we could be at 30% or whatever, and, and we could prove that we are working on a plan.
And we could still, while we're, the plan is being worked on, still apply for grants, even though it's not complete?
We would need probably 90% to start submitting for those. But we could start chasing the avenues of what funding sources are out there available so we're ready when we hit that 90 percentile of the plans. We can then know we have this funding, this funding, this funding, and then we could start chasing those, once we have something we can give them for approval.
My final question is, if we already had a plan in place, which for the residential, I don't believe we do, do we? There's nothing. If we already had, a couple years ago, put a plan in place with all the money that's being thrown out from the state and the federal, we'd have a whole lot better chance of collecting some money. Am I correct?
That is correct, yes. We would, with all the allocations that they're doing now.
So what we're doing right now is trying to get us, get ourselves in a place where we can be viable to receive some monies.
Yes.
But again, we don't, if we don't get any money, we don't have to do it. We don't have to, we can if we want, but we don't have to.
Correct, that's going to be commission directing, direction, once that comes. We would come back and say, this is the engineer's estimate of probable cause, and, you know, this is all the funding, and this is what we can do, you decide yes or no, and we'll go from there. We will have a funded plan in place that, that, oh, I should say, a plan in place that's eligible for funding, and we can resubmit on that, and it may not be next year, it may be the following year, it may be the following year after that, but these things take a very long time. And I think it's important to have a plan in place moving forward. I don't know, I, I don't have the crystal ball, I don't know what DEP's going to do, they're going to say, I know they, you know, are going to start sampling, they're going to start certain requirements, you know, with the inspections of the septic tanks and the sampling of the canals and the reporting of that. How that affects the city, I don't know that. I know they're asking for a plan.
I'm more concerned about capturing the money when we can.
I, I, I agree, and I think our approach has been to go after as much money as we can to keep the loss, cost low for all our residents.
To me, that's number one. Also, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought of another question while y'all were speaking. You're talking about the master plan and the design plan. With her crystal ball, it was about five years. I know yours is a little fuzzy right now, but hers seems to be working. Wouldn't that master plan keep us in line for when the wolves do come knocking on the door and say, it's time to do something, and we say, okay, now we go into design? We have a master plan, but we're just going to push that off until it becomes evident that we must do something. We got, we got tons of project in this city that may take a little bit more priority than what we're looking at here. And then, again, with commercial that we're looking at with other studies. I, I think we're just putting the cart before the horse a little bit here, and I'm not trying to get into comments, but wouldn't that master plan suffice? I know we wouldn't be eligible for grants, we wouldn't be eligible for any of those other benefits until we're ready. As you said, we've got a million dollars sitting there for a $30 million project. We've got to beef up those fundings. So we need to get to that point. We've got Price Boulevard, we've got utilities, we've got Camoyen Studies, major millions of dollars out there in projects that the city needs. So wouldn't the master plan suffice for a short period of time? Even she said, it takes a long time to get from point A to point B to point C.
It, it does. The only thing I will say to that is, it hasn't gotten any cheaper year after year. So we can
Well, maybe the grants will get bigger.
Right, everything is
It could go either way.
Correct. And I haven't been through this septic like Terry has, Terry has 30-something years' experience, 12 of them directly related to these septic-to-sewer conversions. So I would rely on her advice and direction on, is a master plan suffice?
For now. That's, that's all I'm asking.
I don't, Terry Lowery, Joan Zedman, I don't think that DEP is going to come knocking on your door, you know, next year. I do think that, I've, I've never seen the cost go down over time. The, the challenge that I think that we will see in the state of Florida from an engineering, your engineering costs will definitely go up, there is no doubt, no doubt about that. What I'm seeing right now in the state of Florida is that because of the funding that is coming into the state right now, both design and construction both design and construction costs are going to start going up. We're already seeing shortages in materials. And I know you're not even considering construction right now. But if, if you look across the board, it will not get cheaper. I will just say that. It will not get cheaper. Is DEP going to come knocking on your door? Probably not. Again, I don't think in the next five years that they're going to do that. But I do think that as a community, as Charlotte County looks at what they're going to do and how they want to move forward, it's, DEP likes to see all the players playing together in the same sandbox to try and improve the water quality of a given water body. And it is, it is a very fuzzy crystal ball. Because I know last year, there was, there was a huge emphasis in this legislation on the moving some things forward that 10 years ago, they would never have even considered. I mean, that is my best guess, but I don't think that in terms of having a plan ready, I think that helps more than hurts. But in terms of whether DEP is going to come, and they're not going to come slap a fine on you, but as you start looking at your, how you participate in the total max and daily load process to develop that roadmap, they will be asking you for projects and timelines. And having a design will put you instead for funding.
Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell?
There's one thing that I just thought of when we were talking, when I heard my fellow commissioners. The reason that our pre-planted lots do not require city water and city sewer to be hooked up to is because we were grandfathered in back in 1972-ish. We're still grandfathered in unless it's a new community that's being developed. What happens to that grandfathering?
I don't want to speak for Terry, but when you start hitting the surface water, the total maximum data loads, that grandfathering is going to protect you. It won't mean nothing, because they will have EPA. So the state's not the only one that will, is looking after the waters. It's also EPA. And I don't, it's my professional opinion, Terry, you can definitely weigh in. I don't think any grandfathering you had is going to protect you. If you start tripping off the total maximum data loads and the other nutrient loads that are going on with your surface waters, if that starts happening, I don't think there's anything protecting you, that you, any kind of grandfathering is going to protect you, but...
Terry Lowery, Jen Simmons, I do agree. Mr. City Manager, the TMDL program is through the Federal Clean Water Act. DEP is the agency that is now administering the program, but it is a federal program, not a state program.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, any further questions at this point from the commission? All right, we have several comments. But what I'd like to do is take a 10-minute break before we call everybody up. That way we can get a drink, use the restroom or that. So let's come back in 10 minutes. So that would be four, five minutes after seven.
7:05.
7:05. Thank you very much.
The meeting is back to order. City clerk, do you have any online comments on? Excuse me, we're back in order, please, thank you. Do you have any online comments? Let's start with those if you do.
Yes, I have a voicemail also, so I'm going to do that one first.
Go ahead.
Hopefully it works, let's try this.
I'm calling in rest of the meeting, 4:01 PM, May 17, 2021, Agenda 21-0541, regarding sewer and water. Commissioner and employees lied about the state demanding sewer. Scrub you knew it not the state mandate. Employees are hired that others get rid of. Why is that? All commissioners that have in any way promoted this sewer-water-changing poop-to-drinking-water fiasco should resign. I'm sick of you and the financial position you have put Northport residents in. My name is Ivy Pierfalese, 2613 South Haberman Boulevard, Northport, Florida, 34288. Phone number 941-426-5458. Thank you and goodbye.
Thank you very much. Go ahead with the online.
The first one is from Jitka, J-I-T-K-A, and it states, hello, we do not agree with the new project where you want all homeowners to pay $27,000 to connect to city water and sewage. If Florida wants the city, if, excuse me, if Florida and the city wants to go ahead, they should get finance from Florida government, not from homeowners. We do not have this kind of money to pay, and we paid for our well in septic. The vote should be on Northport residents. It's their lives and their money. Many people do not even know about today's meeting for such an important, life-changing meeting. You should send out letters about this so people are aware and can speak for themselves. This is very unfair toward Northport residents. You need to let people vote about this. The second one is from Angela Bates and reads, we would like to make it known that we vote against the water expansion. We are not interested in chlorinated city water. We are definitely against being forced to spend 27,000-plus more to actually connect to the system and then have to pay a monthly fee for each from that point forward. We don't care how long you can finance it for. We are perfectly happy with our well, water, and septic. I could go on about how much better well water is than chemically-treated water, but I won't. This one is anonymous. I am one of many Northport residents who do not agree with the loud minority who oppose any readiness plan for a septic-to-sewer transition. Like so many others, I see the need for developing a plan that would assure taxpayers to have it, to have the least financial burden possible and when this is mandated by the state, excuse me, if and when this is mandated by the state. It's foolish to not have a plan and go blindly forward hoping nothing happens. The loud minority shouts down any voice they disagree with, making it difficult to discuss solid facts. And some of us would prefer sewers to our current septic systems, but our voices can't be heard over the noise from the loud minority. This loud minority spreads disinformation and uses scare tactics to mislead people. Please don't let a loud and bullying minority take charge of this topic. They definitely do not speak for everyone. They are a very loud minority. The third one from Laura Evans reads, this project should not fall on the homeowner to pay for $30,000, will cripple so many people. It's an absurd amount of money to force people to pay. No one signed up for this sewer project. From Jason Kasha, I am vehemently opposed to the expansion of the city water and sewer into the existing neighborhoods. The primary reason for this opposition is the exorbitant installation cost. No residents, no residents should be settled with a bill in excess of $30,000. The city staff and commission have tried to squash this complaint by stating that the cost is unknown. However, the city's own water and wastewater master plan workshop presentation clearly states an estimated cost of $27,500, which does not include the additional cost of hooking to the home once the municipal pipes are laid. Setting that fact aside and assuming that the city staff and commission have no idea what the costs will be to a homeowner for the water and sewer connection, consider this. The work order on the agenda for possible acceptance tonight has the costs detailed prominently on page one and further broken down in excruciating detail on pages 10, 11, and 12. Costs is also mentioned numerous times in the text. Would the commission vote to approve that work order if those costs were completely absent from the work order? If the commission claims they did not know what the cost for a home to connect water and sewer, yet force a connection anyway, they are doing the same thing as approving tonight's work order without knowing the cost. Despite what the commission and staff has suggested, there is no requirement in Florida state bill 712 to connect homes to city water or sewer. There is no state requirement to connect city water, period. If a citizen of Northport is required to connect to city water, it is due to an ordinance of the city. If this connection is forced, it is solely by the hand of the five people sitting on this commission. Doing so will wipe out family savings, savings for a college fund gone. It will put people out of their homes. Personally, I do not have, excuse me, personally, I could not have that weight on my conscience. With the commissioners' votes on this issue, we will know if their conscience can accept that weight. By anonymous, these are my concerns, costs that impact the homeowner that have not been addressed, cost to homeowner to crush septic tank, cost to run sewer and/or water lines from the street to the homeowner's connection. The above costs would be due to a plumber at time of connection and not rolled into the amount that you can finance. If you currently have water, if you currently have city water only, keep in mind your monthly bill will triple when connected to sewer. Something to keep in mind when figuring out the bottom line of the total cost that the homeowner will incur. Lastly, if you are a resident that owns more than one consecutive lot, how will you be assessed for the water and sewer for all the lots under one parcel ID or only for the lot to which you will be utilizing the water sewer service? We are not in favor of the water and wastewater expansion master plan. From Joanne Jinko, regarding water and wastewater expansion, I do not feel homeowners should be burdened with the $27,000. You are proposing to complete the city infrastructure. Connecting to lines should not cost $27,000. You are expecting homeowners to pay for nonexistent infrastructure to bring utility lines to each street. The city needs to find alternate sources of funding and put this project on hold until they find it. If it takes 30 years, I believe most of us homeowners are okay with that. The only mandate should be on new building, and the city needs to budget and plan for infrastructure leading to made roads before charging homeowners way more than their fair share. Commissioners, please vote against this project as it stands. We do not want $27,000 of our home's value tied up in incentives, credits, and grants. And the last one, from Lynn Wheat. Given the paper circulated by NPU, I am very concerned over the financial burden that could be on the property owners, many of whom are on fixed incomes. In fact, all property would be greatly, greatly impacted financially. With the information circulated, as a property owner and resident of Northport for 20 years, 28 years, I would say and vote no. A lot more work needs to be done to make this project feasible and financial, financials sustainable for all parties involved. As elected commissioners under oath, I hope you will leave no stone unturned and be completely transparent with your findings to property owners and citizens and let them decide at the next election. Thank you, Lynn Wheat.
Thank you very much. All right, I am going to call three at a time. If you want to approach over that direction, or actually if you're sitting on this side and you want to approach that one, you can also, but three at a time. Jacob Deroso, is Jacob here? Rich Pizzullo? Either side. Arnold Brevick?
Good evening, my name, can you hear me? My name is Rich Pizzullo. My family owns four houses in the area that's under discussion, so this gave us tremendous pause. I came here full of attitude, thinking that my septic system was legal when I bought it, I'm running it legally now, and I might find out at some point in the future, it's going to be deemed illegal, and I'm going to have to get rid of it. And that was pretty shocking. I learned a lot from the presentation. And I generally think that septic tanks have worked well for a long time, like gravel roads worked for a long time, but sooner or later, we figured out that we might need to have something better. But like gravel roads going to asphalt and concrete roads, the burden of that infrastructure does not fall on the person in front of whose house the road is run. The community decides sooner or later, we're going to get roads out to everybody's house so that nobody's spinning up gravel. And the community pays for these improvements over time. So it might make sense. And then I looked at the map and said, wow, we're mostly on septic. So it's a heavy list. So ultimately, everybody is ultimately going to participate in moving Northport from septic to sewers. Eventually is a long time. And if there's nobody putting a gun to our head, there's not a real reason to start expending resources and spending, expending homeowners' money. So fundamentally, it's unfair and improper to expect that a homeowner would pay to be putting the pipes in the street in front of their house. That's a community improvement. You have the ability to run a construction department, issue permits, do zoning, and demand things of homeowners because it's your responsibility to take care of the housing stock that is going to be used by residents of Northport long after I've passed. That's where you get the authority to make those rules. And because of that, it's inappropriate that I should pay the current cost of an improvement for something that's going to be enjoyed for generations. With all that in mind, the funding authority ought to be found inside the state or in the community. The person of last resort is the homeowner. I liked hearing the words that the communities are being given some wiggle room to figure out how to pay for the improvement. That's responsible on the part of government. Where the irresponsibility comes is when there's no wiggle room given to the homeowner and the resident for figuring out how they're going to pay for it. So while it would make sense to know what the costs are before we move forward, a better alternative would be to fund a feasibility study that would just show us the costs without doing all of the drawings and all of the engineering and all of the surveying so that you have the planning number.
Thank you, the clock has gone off, the three minutes is finished. Thank you, sir.
How's it going? I'm Jacob Deroser. I actually did not plan on coming up here and speaking. I know that there is a large vocal group of people here that come to speak. I'm not as, what's the word, I'm not as upset or angered. In the same instance where I'm glad that the people that were on their gravel roads were finally paying a tax to improve their roads so that we could enjoy what we're driving on today, we will have to pay going forward so that we can have better foundations in the future. It's, it's a cost that has to be occurred, incurred somewhere. Now, if you're going to have a cost, if you're going to have something that is potentially going to be fined in the future, and present day, they're willing to pay and give grant money for that, it would make logical sense to do the improvement now when you can get the grant money versus in the future when someone's forcing you to pay money because you didn't do it in the first place. So you're saving money in the long run by investing early. That's like any other investment that you do in your life. You have to invest early to be able to reap those benefits in the future. We don't have, you're going to have a group of people that is going to disagree with that, that's in any, in any instance, right? You have misinformation out there that spreads, such as, everyone's going to pay $27,000. Anybody that I know that sees a petition that says, would you want to pay $27,000? I don't know a single person that would not sign that. Of course, yeah, I don't want to pay $27,000. That's not how funding works. No one's going to go to your door and say, hey, your $27,000 is due. Where are you going to pay for it? That's not the way that it works. I'm passionate about improving our community so that when we have a larger influx of people, which we're seeing come down to Florida, is going to have the improvements in place for when that occurs. If we wait until it's too late, then it's going to cost us more in the future, and we're going to say, well, why didn't we do this in the past? And yes, engineering projects do require a lot of money in the forefront because the planning for this is massive. A project this large does not just happen on its own. You can't just come up with a number. You can say, oh, it's going to cost $300 billion, easily. There's no proof behind that. It takes time and it takes resources to come to that number. It's not just made up. And I'm sorry, I understand that everyone here is very passionate about this and has very strong opinions, but thumbs down. It is something that is so important for the future. And whether or not we do it now, or whether we do it in 20 years, we're going to have to do it at some point. So if we want to wait and spend more money then, I mean, that's, but there is a large portion of people that are in my boat that understand that it's going to cost us a lot in the future. And there's a very small portion of people that will sign a petition that says, I don't want to pay $27,000, but that's the reality of it. They're not going to come here and voice that opinion, but I wanted to do that today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll also call Sharon Castner and Joe Pizzullo and Robert Sison.
I'm Arnold Brevick. I have been a resident of Northport since 2004. The majority of that time, I was on city water, and the city water was not the super-high quality. I remember when I first moved here in 2004, the city water was brown a lot of the times. And then after, maybe it improved, I moved to another home, I think it was like 2006, 2007, and the city water, I still did, I was buying the bottled water and got with Zephyr Hills, and we still had, once a year, I remember, we'd get a letter from you guys saying, we got a week where you can't really use your water, you got to boil it. I think that's still the case now. And I moved just this past year to Northport Estates, and I do have a well on my home, and the water is perfect. It's beautiful. It's clean. I paid money to fix it and everything, and now I'm hearing that $27,000, and this man says, he just walked in and he knows that's not going to be charged to any of us because he knows that, because he just knows it. But somebody's going to charge something. To me, my house is way far from the road. It's got a well with perfect water right on it, and either I'm going to be charged for that personally, or the city of Northport is going to be charged for my house getting water from the city that's a lower quality than what I have now, and way lower quality. And, and either I'm going to pay it, or you're going to pay it, or we're both going to pay it. And it's, mine's just one house, and it's going to multiply for everybody else. I don't, didn't know all about this until just recently. I hear, I found it on Facebook. People are saying it like that. So it's not been well-known, at least to me. And I'm not an expert on these things, but I have doubts every time the EPA comes and says, this we need for the world to clean up the water. And we need it for the whole state to clean up the water. And then one man here said something about the residents of Northport. Well, I know as a resident of Northport, putting pipes into my land, which is beautiful, you know, adding that is not adding to the environment or helping the environment. And the water has not, I've been in both places. The water's better where I am now.
City manager, I know this isn't question and answer, but could a staff speak with him because the estates is never to receive services for the comp plan? So could somebody?
We could definitely have that.
Get with him, please.
The reality of it is, the estate's density is so low, it'd be almost impossible to run sewer and water up there.
Well, it's in the comp plan, it can't be touched.
Jen, or Mike, if you could, give the gentleman's contact info.
Thank you. Sharon?
Yes. Hi, my name is Sharon Castner, and I'm a resident. Obviously, I'm against this. I'm retired, I'm 76 years old, and it's going to be an impossible thing for me to come up with this kind of money. The other thing I'd like to say is, I was not aware of the meeting, and I wish that, is there a way you, the commission, can send out mailing to us residents to let us know, because this is such an important meeting, that I think there would be a lot more residents here if we knew about it. None of us, I guess Facebook or my neighbor told me. So if there's any way to do that, I think the residents would definitely appreciate it, the commission could do something about that, that we hear about these important meetings. I thank you for your service and what you try to do for us, but we really cannot afford this, honestly and truthfully. So I hope you take long and hard decision-making on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. First I salute my flag. Some of us might be lucky, some of us may not be. Some of our neighborhoods, at the end of the block, have water, and the rest of the block does not. I don't know how that infringes or how it lowers the price, or possibly lowers the price, but I'm not sure, but I hope I will find that answer out sometime. Getting back to the young man that just spoke, he has good ideas, but he's probably 30 years old. I'm 80, and there's a lot of us here in my age bracket that will never be able to do this. I did what I had to do for my country, and I'd like to see my country do something back for me, like Mr. President said, Kennedy. And one last thing, what do you consider a hardship? Please think about that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
State his name for the record, because he didn't state it when he was up there.
Sir, I mean, does he need to? I mean, you can speak anonymously, so I have his card. Yes, sir. Could you give?
Commissioners and fellow residents, my name is Robert Sisson. I'm a new homeowner in Northport within the past year, having moved here from Sebring, Florida, where I lived for four years. This is the first time in my life that I've actually ever had to deal with a septic system or other than city water. Being a retired attorney, I'm encouraged, I must say, that the commissioners are seemingly concerned about the costs of the septic system program to the fellow residents. It would appear to me that a vast many of my fellow residents here today are likely on fixed incomes, as I am. I would suggest that any cost to the homeowners is just too much. From what I've heard today, it would seem that only construction-ready plans are going to be at the head of the grant request, likely lowering Northport with merely a expensive study to the lower end of the grant totem pole. If that is in fact the case, then it might be, seem more reasonable to merely wait until we are required to move forward, allowing us to spend the $500,000 that this grant, or that this study would cost, to be used on a other program and probably more needed programs that are urgently needed in the city of Northport right now. If a plan in place could guarantee funding, then it would seem logical, but it doesn't appear that that is the case here, from what I've heard. Whatever the commission does, please keep in mind that any cost to each resident is prohibitive. I like the idea from Commissioner McDowell with moving forward with commercial-first programs. And if Northport merely waits till the feds come calling, then I say let them pay for it. Thank you.
Barbara Early, Ray Jaris, and Greg Gregory.
Hi, my name is Barbara Early, and they were talking about, you were talking about these 28 watersheds or sewer sheds. Now, what are they, I mean, are they like septic tanks for the city, or what, can you elaborate on that? I don't know how.
No, ma'am, this is public comment, so you comment.
Oh, okay, well, good. So my comment is, last week, Commissioner Langdon was concerned about the water supply in Northport, and that we need to do something about that. And so Mike Acosta, he was trying to, saying how it's necessary And so Mike Acosta, he was trying to, saying how it's necessary to have something like that. That's why that sewer, sewer water to drinking water. And he was equating Northport with Tampa. Now, Tampa and Northport are two different kinds of cities. Northport is a residential city mainly, and it does have some stores, it has some restaurants, small offices, a small mineral, natural springs, mineral springs, and a little water park. As opposed to Tampa, that has, you know, that has residential also, but it has a phosphate plant. We don't have a phosphate plant. It has industrial plants, they have big corporations, factories, they have a big airport, they have hospitals, they have water parks, huge water parks, like Busch Gardens. Of course, they would be more susceptible to having some kind of conversion to supply for water there. We're not even there. We're not even there. I know that, you know, we have to, you know, watch our water, but why can't we have something like, instead of sewer sheds, why not watersheds to retain the free water you get from the sky? You know? We don't have any facility like that, you know? I don't know if that would be cheaper or more expensive, I don't know. But that's something to look at. And also, with the burden, okay, with this, with the turning this well in septic to city and water, now we're putting a more burden on the city, on our water, on our water supply. Now, now we're going to have another problem. I agree with Commissioner Emmerich. You know, we have a lot of things now that we need, that needs immediate attention now. And we need the money for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Ray Jaris, and I've been resident of Northport for 15 years. I've also been a real estate agent for 23 years. Familiar with what Port Charlotte went through, as I used to be a Port Charlotte resident, with their city water and sewer. Basically, with sewer, all the areas that got sewer had city water already. So the costs are not going to be the same as they would be in Northport. Also, that area that got the sewers were built in the '70s and very early '80s. They were not built to the current elevation standards of new property, especially in Northport, where all the new property. And it appears that most property here that's on septic was built after 2000, or maybe after 1998. It's all elevated, it's all got a deeper base for the septic system to run through. Also, according to EPA studies, the groundwater pollution or the runoff is rain runoff, and it comes from the streets, from large commercial areas. That's why swift mud requires holding tanks for all commercial construction, runoff ponds for the water to go into from the driveways and parking areas. Most of the septic system in Northport, I'm sure, is probably in good condition. We need to test the water. Nobody's tested the water here to find out if there's any pollution going into it from the septic system. I can understand pollution going in from Route 41 and other areas, not necessarily the septic systems. As far as city water, water is in short supply in Florida. If there's another drought, and it looks like there may be one, we haven't had rain in quite a while, to pump out the Myacca Creek and the Cocoa Plum Waterway and send it to additional housing would probably drain it in a drought year. And to say that we have contracts with Port, with Charlotte County and Sarasota County to get water, if there's a water shortage, those contracts are going to be null and void. You're not going to get the water here. I do not recommend doing the septic system, doing the way with the septic system right now. It will automatically reduce the price of housing here, because as a real estate agent, you will have to disclose that to any new buyer that comes in to purchase property. You'll have to tell them immediately that there will, may be, a $30,000 or $27,000. You guys don't know the cost yet. So it could be anywhere from $15,000 to $50,000. That has to be disclosed to any new buyer that purchases, either your older home or a new home. I'm sure once the builders hear about that, they may curtail building, which may not be a bad thing, but you're going to have a problem selling your house if you want to move. So thanks for hearing me out, and I hope you do not approve this.
Thank you, sir. As this other gentleman comes up, Ron Gray, Paul Amit, and Dan Bealman, please. Go ahead, Mr. Gregory.
My name is Greg Gregory. I'm here because I have two main concerns about this whole process tonight. Number one, as somebody said, "I didn't know anything about this." And I'm sure this has been ongoing for quite some time. I don't know your timeline, and I do not know when it first started. I do believe that if, as a homeowner, we should have been notified months ago that this was under consideration. This is a large project, great magnitude. Secondly, the misinformation that's out there. I found out about this meeting from a neighbor. He told me all about it, and I asked him to explain to me what was going on. And when he did, he started telling me some of the numbers. I've heard $30,000 or $27,000. I heard your people say $12,000, $5,000. It's all over the map. Somewhere along the line, you have to get the proper information out. I asked my neighbor where he heard this, and he said, "From Facebook." I laughed, well, I laughed myself, too. I don't, I don't do Facebook, I don't do social media. I would expect information from the source, from you people, and that's what I want before I can make a decision. There's pros and cons to this whole process, we all know that, pretty obvious thing. I've been involved in the other side. I was on construction, I was with a project, I was involved in installing sewer lines when a major project came through. I know that's a substantial expense that you have to let homeowners know. That process, especially if you're going to require them to remove a tank versus pumping it out and filling it up, that's a decision that has to be made. You're talking anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 there alone, on top of, you know, hooking on. And like everybody else in here, I'm retired on a fixed income, and I'd have to make some hard decisions if this were to, you know, come down in the future. So all I ask is, you know, better information to, I think we'd all be better off if we knew more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'll state your name, please.
Ron Gray, 4624 Lenman Avenue, Northport. First off, I want to tell you people that we lost a very good friend and a mentor last week. And you all know, his name was Steve Burke. He had a massive heart attack. He was our soul of information. Let's get to the brass tacks. There's so many numbers out here, $25,000, $27,000, $30,000, $35,000. Nobody knows what it is. I don't know what it is. But I can tell you from the commission, they said $27,500. Now, everybody wants to know, "How are you going to pay for this?" Well, there's three ways. You're either going to pay it up cash, take out a loan, or it's going to go on your taxes, and it's going to be a lien on your property, and it's going to go on your credit report. That is a fact. Now, let's just take a number of $30,000, and let's base that over 30 years, $1,000 a year. Break it down to the month, it's $83 a month. Not a lot of money. But you've got a water bill coming, you've got a sewer bill coming, you're going to be over $200 a month. Now, if you start figuring that out, you're into a lot of money. There are so many people in Northport that are on Social Security, or they get Social Security money on top of maybe a retirement. The average is about $1,200 a month. Some make less, some make more. If you take that 83, and your water and sewage bill will be over $200, times 12 months, that's $2,400. That's two months of Social Security money that you're going to take from us. And we can't afford it. We don't want it, we don't need it. I just don't understand where your minds are at. But I'm going to tell you this much. With Mr. Bealman, and the late Steve, and Chuck Wilson, I talked to a lady, and she said to me, "She is so worried, she's scared." And I asked her why, and I said, "Don't worry, it'll be okay." She lost her husband six months ago. They paid their house off a year ago. She's only got Social Security. She's worried she's going to lose her home. And she will. And nobody cares. I'm telling you, use your conscience, your heart, and think about everybody instead of all these other agencies and what have you. Think about the residents here in Northport. Because come election time, when you're running for reelection, it's going to be a political suicide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ah, 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 no clapping, thank you very much, the pinky clap, thank you. Mr. Bealman.
Hi, I'm Dan Bealman. Ron hit the nail on the head with a lot of the stuff. And then what I'd like to reiterate is what I said on last Friday at the meeting. We're putting the cart again in front of the horse. First of all, Mr. DeSantis and Mr. Vellstein, I think, who's the head of the environmental department, said today in their speech, "They're going to concentrate on the major waterways that are affecting the problem. They're going to test them, and they're going to do it." We are not on a major waterway, not even close, we're 18 miles away from the ocean. What are we doing? We're spending money that, just like a few of the other people said, that we could be putting money toward other projects. Price Boulevard, for one, okay? Get some other commercial part, I'd agree with Debbie. Commercial done first. See what it brings in. You bring in and raise the income in the area, now you've got something to work with. These people will have a little extra cash. You'll bring in some younger people. These vacuum pumps they're talking about, anybody ever witnessed this? Everybody, anybody been through it? You know when they go on, how much it stinks the neighborhood up? You can smell them four or five blocks away. They're electrical, and they're mechanically controlled. And if one part goes out, the other part goes out. The other thing you guys talked about was how much money you get from grants. The average grant money, I don't care what it is, if it's environmentally or health department-oriented, it's only 32 to 34% is what you end up getting. You don't get 70%, not even close, very few. This is going to be a big burden on a lot of people, it's going to force a lot of people out of their homes, they're going to go bankrupt, the foreclosure rate's going up. And if you compare Cape Coral right now, and what's going on in Martin County, what's going on down in Charlotte County, the foreclosure rate is going up. And this person who has some real estate experience can probably back that up, too. These people can't do it. It's a sad thing to see. I hope you guys think it over real, real seriously before you nail these people. Thank you.
Is Paul, thank you very much, is Paul Amit here? All right, thank you, sir. And then we have David Blaine and Margie Haffin?
Hi, I'm Margie Haffin. I'm a Northport resident, very concerned about this issue. As in life, nothing is guaranteed, and neither are your grants that you're going to apply for. You're not going to be guaranteed to get them. You, all five, are playing Russian roulette with the taxpayers' money. See, if you're going to get it, you're not. Not only are you playing Russian roulette with that, but you're playing Russian roulette with their livelihoods, the ones that are on fixed income, the ones that just barely get by. We are a bedroom community. We do leave here to go to work. There's not much besides restaurant jobs and your storefront jobs for us to be here. I would suggest that you think long and hard about this. You are putting such an economic pressure. Commissioner Langdon, you suggested putting something on top of the price of a house. As Mr. Gray mentioned, Steve Burke, who had recently passed, had said that he was going to buy a house in Cape Coral with such the option that Commissioner Langdon proposed. Knowing that there was a $30,000 top end for the water, he backed out, he moved here. He has said that to us multiple times. That don't work. You are pricing people out of the city with what you are proposing. There is, instead of taking the $500,000 that you were going to do for this study, I moved here in '02 from South Rennes. Water quality was great then. Two years later, I got a notice from the city, water quality is being lowered. Take that money, put it back into the water quality. The $249,000 that three of you had voted to spend on, you should have taken that and put that back into the testing of the water quality. Because I won't give it to my animals, and I don't drink it, and I'm sure many of these fine folks in this room right here will go out and buy bottled water before they drink the city water that is at the level and standard of it is now. Think long and hard what you plan on doing, because you're not only affecting these people, there's a lot of people that have not been notified, and you're affecting them, too. You talk about growth in the city of Northport. You will affect the growth if you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's David Blair. I found it very troubling, your utilities commissioner is so friendly, taking advice and guidance from the salesman. This is like having, going to a used car lot, buy a car, and a guy goes, "It's never been turned back, one owner." You drive off the lot, the bumper falls off, you go back in, he don't know you. How can you have the salesman as your mentor? And then today, I'm talking to the guy that put in my water system, I'm telling him about all the stuff that's going on, and he says, "Well, the West Villages need someone to pay for their water system." I don't know what's going on. I mean, I don't know if there's any truth in the matter, but I have an adult child with disabilities. He's got, you know, serious health problems, and I hope he won't be until I die. Now, I thought I was having, taking care of him, you know, working hard, saving him and everything. I'm looking to move now. I can't handle, I can't put this on him. He needs someone to take care of him, and I don't need him to be worrying about taxes going up every year, and him having to pay off, he won't even know what it is, or it'll be there on him. So you just have our lights in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is all of the comments that I have, okay? All right, at this point, I'm going to open the floor back up to the commissioners for Anybody have any comments or final questions before I entertain a motion? Commissioner White, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple things. First, I want to, I want to thank the first person who came, or maybe the second person who came up, that you were very brave to, because, yes, when you're the minority, it really is, is difficult. I also want to give a shout out to our Northport Utilities. I've had city water for 30 years, okay? And that was one of my requirements when I moved here. I wanted to be on city, city water, and I love it, okay? So it is good. This is, a few things has come to my mind. First of all, we have this program called Do the Right Thing, and we need to do the right thing. As I used to say to my son, "Your lack of planning shouldn't constitute an emergency on my part." Because I got that a lot from him. You know, Florida, water is everything, and it's everywhere. And all of our waterways here lead to the Gulf. It doesn't matter that we're not a coastal. It doesn't matter that we're not a coastal community, our waterways lead to the Gulf. And all the research and reading that I've done about septic tanks, they all produce excess nitrogen, which, with Florida, we have sandy soil, we have a high water table, and rising sea levels, and this is just a recipe for disaster. And which is why our governor has taken action that we need to have, to clean up our waterways. And just because we don't have testing for excess nutrients in our canals doesn't mean it's not there, and it doesn't mean it's not going to get there. Like I said, septic tanks are just not, not good. I especially was taken by the fact that in Northport, did I hear this correctly, that we have double the number of septic tanks per capita as compared to the entire state of Florida? I mean, that itself just says we need to put a plan. And that's what this is, this is a plan. This is not, we're not going to go knocking on doors tomorrow. This is a plan, it's going to come back, the design's going to come back, the funding's going to come back, and we'll have more, more numbers. Like the young man said, you know, people are throwing out these amounts out there that are not really based on anything, because we don't have a plan. How would you know what something's going to cost unless you have a plan? So we need to at least get a plan going here. You know, we have to get in the game, I don't think we, it's not responsible government to wait until somebody puts you up against the wall and say, "Okay, now you have to do this." I think it's more fiscally prudent for us to at least have a plan. So we know what's available, and then we could make some decisions about if this really is feasible. I really don't appreciate that, but, you know, that's, that's fine.
Excuse me?
So, again, I love Florida. We all have a responsibility to be stewards for this, just because, and because we're here. Most of us come from places outside of Florida. And for me, I have to admit, yes, I was born and raised in New Jersey. I left there for a reason. I didn't come here to recreate the mess of New Jersey. And I'm sorry if I, you know, people are upset with that statement. But I love Florida, and I'd like to see it protected. And we have that responsibility to do that. And this plan is at least a start in that direction. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell? Excuse me, I apologize, Commissioner Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everybody who gave testimony here today. It just really reinforced for me how difficult this whole conversation is and what a potentially devastating impact the costs can be on people if we don't do it right and if we don't do it in a planful way. So I agree, many people brought up the fact that a lot more work needs to be done before we're ready to undertake any construction project in the septic-to-sewer area. So I totally agree with folks who have said that. And one of the key essential elements for me is that we come up with a funding model so that we all know what to expect when this happens. I'm not going to say if, because, you know, based on the research I've done and the information shared here today and in the background materials, it really is a matter of when, not if. But there's the cost of the project, and then there's what's the way we're going to fund it. And so I will not approve any septic-to-sewer construction project without a funding model that offloads as much of the cost as possible from the individual homeowner and gives the homeowner some wiggle room in terms of planning and how to finance and how to minimize the impact of anything we might do in the future. Another piece of work that I would want to see done before we undertake any construction project is I want testing. I want to know for sure if our septic systems are actually impacting the waterways in our area. We don't know that yet. So let's get the proof of that if it's happening. Let's get our benchmarks in place, and let's track it over time so that we know when we need to take action on this issue. The current design project, and it's not a construction project, it's a design project for the first neighborhood area, though expensive, is a really small investment when you consider the cost of bringing water and sewage to all the homes within Northport. So I'm inclined to make that investment because it keeps us in the game for grants and for other kinds of financial assistance that without it, we wouldn't have an opportunity to get that funding. So I think it's in all of our best interests to complete this project. It will make us shovel-ready, as Mr. Wollo was talking about, and will make us eligible for sources of funding that can help offset the costs on all of us. So I'm supportive of moving forward with the design project, but I will not approve any construction project or implementation of moving septic to sewer until the things that I just mentioned to you are in place and we have the data and we have the information. And clearly, we need to do a better job of communicating with our residents. And I will get my fingers all over that to make sure that we, that people know ahead of time, that we have meetings and what's happening. I know part of the Kim Lee Horn work plan is to implement neighborhood workshops so that we all know what's going on in our areas. And I am personally going to keep my eye on that and make sure that they happen and we have good communication around them and that we have the opportunity for further dialogue on this. So that's my story, I'm sticking to it. And I'll work hard to minimize any negative impact to the individual homeowners. I'm one of you, I don't have a lot of money in the bank either. I'm as worried about it as you all are, too. Thank you so much for letting me share that with you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell, floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to you, the residents that came out and voiced your concerns for this project or your support of this project, whether that was online or in person, thank you. Clearly, we need to do a better job keeping you all informed. This has been something that I have been advocating for the past four to five years. This is a huge project. And it does nobody any good to have misinformation being spouted without anything from the city to counteract that. Yes, we have a fantastic page, webpage, from the Utilities Department that counteracts the misinformation that's being out there. But it's not as loud, it's not as pretty, it's not as obvious as somebody saying, "Hey, do you want $27,000, do you want to pay for this?" We, we did do a lot more than what we are required to do. We went door-to-door to each one of the homes in this mapped area and gave them a flyer. I know that state requirement says, "Just post the agenda." But like everybody, we're busy with our lives, you know? There's social media that the city puts out that says, "Hey, there's this meeting, there's the agenda that posts." Each one of the Commissioners, I think every one of us, have a Facebook page. I have to tell you, the amount of people that actually reached out to me via Facebook or by the phone was minimal. I could count probably on two hands. But all the comments on Facebook, I can't answer every single one of them, I'm just one person. And not only that, when I answer, nobody else can on this diet. So that's unfair to my fellow Commissioners. So a lot of people were thinking that, "We don't care, we're not hearing, we're not listening." That's not the case, folks. This is a design plan, it's only design. It's $500,000. I will not be in support of this design plan. I feel $500,000 can go a much further invested in our commercial properties to get us a bigger and better return on our investment. At some point, we're going to have to address this neighborhood expansion project. Right now, there's way too many questions unanswered before I can give my stamp of approval and my yes vote. There's a lot of steps that need to go before construction actually begins. I would love to talk to you individually or with a small group, get somebody from the Utilities Department. Our Utilities Department is not the enemy, folks. They're willing to take your calls and answer your questions. We have other things that we need to do. We have aging infrastructure that's already existing, that's been in the ground for fifty, sixty years. It's failing. We need to focus on that. We need to focus on our commercial. We need to focus on... The coastal waterways and the high springs areas are going to be the priority compared to Northport. I, I've seen it in the past where we've put out for grants, but we don't fit the criteria that they're actually looking for to be able to award those grants. If we were coastal, yeah, we'll probably get grants, the full amount, no. If we were in a high springs area, we could get some grants, but it's definitely not going to be the full amount. Water is scarce as it is. That's, that was evident a couple of weeks ago when we had the presentation on the DPR. And if it's scarce to do a toilet-to-top water feasibility study, what are we going to do when we're adding on other thousands of parcels onto city water? It's going to make it even more scarce, which then drives the need for the toilet-to-top water. It's this vicious cycle. I just cannot support the design. I hope our, my fellow Commissioners will support using that money for commercial. But we will see what happens with the votes. But again, thank you for hearing me out, thank you, Commission, for hearing, and thank you to you, the citizens. And staff. And staff.
Vice Mayor.
It gets scary when I agree with Commissioner McDowell.
We're doing it a lot.
We're doing this a lot often. It's happening. We even both got our haircuts today, believe it or not. Different salons. But I, I agree, I mean, we've got failing water structures, we've got warm-melt springs, we've got Price, we've got so many projects out there, and it's hard for me to even think about sleeping at night if I'm jumping another $30 million into figuring out where the hell that money's coming from. You know, it's difficult. We do make hard decisions, but we have to have the funding. And we have to have the purpose that makes sense. With listening to the grants and everything, we've got grant windows. Well, there's a grant window a couple, three years down the road that maybe we'd be ready for. Today, I don't believe is the day that we need to be ready for it. I think we need to wait. I think we need to get some holdings on the things that we need to get moving forward, get a little bit more stable. We don't have a permanent city manager. We do not have a permanent Utilities Director. Those positions are vacant. I would much rather wait to have those personnel onboard to help with these decisions going forward. Let's make a plan and budget for this going forward. We want to do it next year, let's have some extra money sitting there next year. But to come up with it right now with no funding, no guarantees of grants, no nothing, I don't want to stress out the citizens of Northport thinking that they, hey, the misinformation that's out there, 30 grand, you're going to worry about that for the next two years? I can't have that on my conscience, so I won't be supporting the design plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell, were you...
Waiting until you're ready for a motion, Mayor? That's what my light is on for.
Okay. I'm in agreement with what Commissioner Langdon stated about making sure that the future is where it needs to be. And all along, this Commission has stated that we do not want any burden on taxpayers whatsoever. We can't determine funding until a plan is put in place. So we don't even, I mean, to get to step one is the plan. And staff has already stated that the plan then can sit on the shelf until funding comes along. But you're barred from stuff if you don't at least have the plan put in place. As far as the funding, that $475,000 is already in the SRTAX. We discussed this back in December and stuff, and it's sitting there for this project. There is also in the SRTAX the funding for Price Boulevard, the utility work that's going to be going on for the expansion of that. There is also the money for matching the grant for the commercial area going down Sumter to 75, that is there also. So in order to use that $475,000 on something else, you'd have to steal it from Utilities. We, as a board, would have to make a decision for a different capital improvement plan and steal it from them. And when it was placed in there for these purposes, I'm not going to steal it from them and put it somewhere else, especially when they're taking care of the lines going out to 75 down Sumter, and they've got the money for Price sitting there. So I am in favor of a plan. I am not in favor of everybody being worried about being soaked for money. Not at all. So for the plan, for the first step, we're prepared to take that first step. I would like to do so. And then we'll work on details a year from now when, when the plan is put in place. Commissioner McDowell, your light's on.
Yes, Mayor, before I make a motion, I really think that this money would be better spent towards determining if our canals upstream and downstream are contributing to this septic problem. You know, you hear Charlotte Harbor is saying that they're impaired. Well, they're going to blame their neighbor, but are we really to blame? I don't know. Nobody can, nobody, based on today's meeting, has been able to answer the question if Northport is contributing to the failing of Charlotte Harbor. And I think before we commit any money, we need to determine, is Northport contributing to that failure? And the only way to do that is to put some money towards testing our waters, upstream, downstream, midstream. Find out if it's the septic tanks that are causing it, is it the water runoff that's causing it? Is it the impurities from the cars and God knows what else? I don't know, but nobody answers that question when I asked it. For us to move forward with a project for a design of something that we're not 100% sure is a problem is concerning to me.
If I can speak to that?
Sure.
Staff has already, and City Manager, I'll let you speak to this because you stated that there's already conversation going on with Charlotte County in regards to testing as to who or what or who would be viable for the monies and things like that. So they're working on that. And when I believe a solution would be made, we would hear about financing. But interim City Manager, could you speak to that?
Yeah, it's kind of preliminary at this stage, but, you know, the county manager of Charlotte kind of informed me that they were going to be starting a surface testing program. And I know that our staffs have had conversations with their staffs. program, and I know that our staffs have had conversations with their staffs, but I don't have any particular details at this moment. I can get you particular details, but right now, I know Mrs. Wong has been having conversations and other personnel have been having conversations with Charlotte County personnel. I don't know a whole lot more details other than that. I will be having a meeting with the county manager this week, I believe, for Charlotte County, and I can get into further detail with him about it, but that's kind of the gist. I know they're starting up a program, that I do know, and it will involve testing the surface waters, and those waters come from us, flow through us.
And I understand that would... In your opinion, should we be waiting until that, those conclusions are brought about before we do any assigning of monies? Because we don't know.
Well, if they test and they're not finding a whole lot of problem, then that might preclude you from needing to test. But obviously, if they do find a problem, then you may want to do testing then. But right now, it's at the beginning, and I don't know if there's a whole lot of detail to make a decision on based off of... It's just beginning with them.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell, go ahead.
Yeah. Part of the reason that we put in place the baseline for the waters coming into our city was so... Because of Mosaic. We obviously... Well, you want to trust people to do the right thing and gather the data professionally and correctly. Mosaic was paying for water testing. Well, we wanted to make sure that our water testing matched their water testing for very obvious reasons. And I think the same would apply in this case. This is our city. These are our impurities that we need to make sure are truly flowing into the Charlotte Harbor. Charlotte County goes far east than just the water that we contribute to that harbor, and then it goes into the big, huge pot. So, I really think it is in our best interest to ensure that the testing that is done, even if it's baseline testing for a year or two, can determine, are we contributing to the problems of Charlotte Harbor? Yes, Charlotte County is going to be doing that, but these are our figures. To be able to say, yes, this is correct, hey, we got matching numbers, they're really close, or, oh, wait a minute, that's not what our number show, how did you get those numbers? We aren't going to have that information if we just leave it to Charlotte County to do it themselves. It's... That is not in the best interest of the city of Northport.
I agree with you, but I think it's a conversation that we need to get or talk about when the staffs talk to each other. Go ahead, city manager.
If you all want to... If you move the direction for us to put together a surface testing program, I wouldn't ask for too many specifics. Let me get together with... If this is the direction we're going, let me get together with staff and figure out a program and bring you something back, if that's the direction we're going.
All right, I'm going to ask for consensus to see if the commission wants staff to go ahead and look into testing of the water flow that goes into Charlotte County. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, the only caveat that I would like to add to that consensus is that we make sure it's upstream, downstream, and to determine if it's septic impurities or runoff impurities, because there are easy ways to determine that.
That will be... May be a little bit more intense than what you may think. I'm not saying that we can't test, but identifying the point source, that may be a little bit more intense than what you may think.
Taking a water sample up at Maiaquehatchee Creek, for example, and you're taking a water sample down at 41 at Maiaquehatchee Creek. What...
I'm just... I'm going to leave the consensus stand as is, not to complicate it anymore, but to have them initiate testing, and then we can refine what they bring back to us. So, Commissioner McDowell.
So, are they going to start testing, or are they going to bring back an agenda item to discuss how they're going to be testing?
They can bring back an agenda item and with recommendations or a report back of what they have discussed with Charlotte County staff. Commissioner McDowell.
I'm going to say yes, but I would like to see it quicker than waiting for Charlotte County, but I'm a yes.
Commissioner White?
I'll say yes.
I'm a yes. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Langdon?
Yes, and I suspect Mrs. Wong already has a plan.
I would imagine so, too. So, city manager? Are you finished with your question? Can I go to the next commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Commissioner McDowell brought up a couple of good points, but one of the things that we deal with as elected officials is we look at how we're perceived by our peers, and Facebook is one of those big avenues. And constantly out there, we're always blamed for wasteful spending, wasteful spending, wasteful spending. Some cases, it's true, some cases, it's not. At this point in time, I believe this is wasteful spending, so... And I will not be supporting this, so I won't be taking that, that I am one of them out there being wasteful spending when I read all those comments. There are so many unknowns involved in what's going on right now that I believe can wait. So, I just wanted to put that in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I will...
You ready for a motion?
entertain a motion?
I've got a couple of them, so I'll start with the one that's most obvious that staff needs regarding the actual master plan. I make a motion, Mayor, to approve the master plan as presented with the consensuses to update the sewer shed map and add those geographic marking points.
All right, there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve the master plan?
As presented.
As presented.
With the consensus given.
With Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
No, that's not what I'm doing, Mayor.
Okay.
I am approving the master plan. That was... Hang on, let me get it out. The master plan, it says the title of it is Preliminary Cost Estimates and General Sequencing Master Plan. That's the master plan.
Mike Brullo, Interim Utilities Director. The master plan was done by Giffles and Webster.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Kim Lee Horn had nothing to do with it.
So, by calling it the master plan, that's the master plan?
That is, yes.
Okay. So, I'm approving the master plan by Giffles and Webster's engineers with the consensus given regarding the update of this sewer shed map.
Okay, thank you. I see what you're doing now.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve the master plan with consensus, and it was seconded by Vice Mayor. Do you want to speak to that, Commissioner McDowell?
No, I think this master plan, and the words that were used by our consultant was, this master plan's better than nothing, and it's showing good faith that we are trying to move forward with something related to neighborhood, city water, and city sewer. It is not doing anything else except saying, here's our plan, that's what we've got, until the next motion.
Vice Mayor?
Yep, I agree. I knew that's what she was proposing. The master plan, you have your plan. The design plan is a different plan, but at least you have a starting plan. That I will approve.
Anything, Commissioner White?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to be sure what this motion is. Is this what we... Was on the agenda?
No. This is accepting the master plan, but not the work assignment.
Can't have a work assignment without the master plan.
So, they're accepting the master plan, but not implementing the work assignment.
If I may, Mayor?
Certainly.
So, the master plan was done and prepared back in October. It was presented to the commission at the December 7th workshop. At that time, the commission went through the master plan, asked our questions. Staff needed direction to move forward using the master plan, but because we were in a workshop, we could not accept the master plan, nor could we move forward on anything. So, first order of business is to accept the master plan or tell staff to go back and start over. This master plan seems to fit the bill, so that's why I'm requesting to accept the master plan. Staff has it, it's done, commission has approved it and blessed it. That is all we are doing with this motion. There will have to be another motion if you want to approve the design component for Section 2 of... That's outlined in the master plan.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, because I wasn't here for that.
Of course, that's why I wanted to get my... Back up on that. And thank you for the hesitation.
Should have known.
She did a lot of research while she was a candidate.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Commissioner Langdon, anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then go ahead and take the vote. And that motion passes five to zero. So, Commissioner McDowell, you said you had another?
Sure.
Other motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to use the $474,796,000 towards the completion of design and start... I'm sorry, let me start over. I'm sorry, Mayor. I'll make a motion to use the $7474,796,000 towards the completion of all the design projects for the commercial areas in the city, and those... Do you want specifics? For the gateway, the Panacea, and the springs.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Vice Mayor, that the $474,796,000 be utilized for the completion of the commercial design for Warmail Springs, Gateway, and Panacea. Anything to that, Commissioner McDowell?
This is the prudent thing to do. This is where we get the return on our investment. We are investing in design for those commercial corridors. Once that design is done, then we can talk about doing the actual construction, then we can talk about getting jobs here, we can talk about getting businesses here, getting a larger tax base here. That money, then, would be repaid to the utilities department so that we can concentrate on neighborhood expansion.
Anything to that, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, once again, I agree, but with the commercial coming in and building up the funding back in utilities, it could reduce the cost and burdens on homeowners down the road, letting it pay as we go. So, I agree with that, wholeheartedly. We should be putting that money into the commercial aspects.
Commissioner White, anything? Any question or...
No.
Commissioner Langdon?
I have a question, and that is, I understood that the design phases for the commercial projects were paid for or almost paid for, so it's unclear to me what the $474,000 would be applied to.
Balance that they need to do to finish the design plan.
City Attorney has her light on, let's let her go ahead and speak.
Yes, Mayor. Unfortunately, I have a bit of a little concern about the motion relating to utilizing the funds for commercial expansion or commercial design. In taking a look at this item on the agenda, it is specific to neighborhood expansion, and it's a significant dollar amount. I don't know if you want to take the legal risk here in having a potential notice challenge and not notifying the public of discussing utilizing these funds for commercial use. That doesn't mean that you would have to approve them for neighborhood use. You could always bring that back as an agenda item at a later time for the commercial side.
SRTAC money, I appreciate that, City Attorney. It's SRTAC money for utilities project, and it's still a utilities project using SRTAC. So, I appreciate you weighing in.
Sure, but I want to make sure that the mayor and the commission know that I have a legal concern about the motion because the noticed item is specific to this amount of money, this work assignment for a neighborhood expansion, Blue Ridge, Salford, North, Phase 1 design. It's not related to how to spend SRTAC money that's dedicated to utilities.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you want to leave your motion on the floor? This can also be discussed during budget, too.
Give me a moment. I want to leave it on the floor, but I also have to heed the advice of the city attorney. But at the same time, I am fearful by removing my motion that's been seconded, that another motion will come in and nullify what us, as a commission, has been trying to do to our commercial corridors in bringing jobs and using the CMOIN study as our guide. It had been mentioned many times about the return on the investment. This project gives us zero return on the investment, and a whole hell of a lot of citizens out there are madder than hornets because we do not have all the answers that we need to be able to make a decision.
City Attorney, and then I'll call on Commissioner Langdon.
May I suggest a possible alternative motion might be to withhold allocating, you know, these funds or dedicating these funds until the commission can have a properly noticed discussion on utilizing them for commercial utility design purposes?
Thank you, City Attorney.
Commissioner Langdon?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking as though it's either/or, that we have to choose to either do a design project for residential septic to sewer or finish designs for our commercial areas, and that is just a fallacy. So, those projects are a priority. I would certainly be very slow to fund any construction around septic to sewer without letting those other projects play out. But again, that this money keeps us in the grant game, which can lower the costs of this project for our residents. So, it is not an either/or. We can certainly do both, and the funds have been allocated for both. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell, your light was on in front of Commissioner White.
I'll yield to Commissioner White, and then I'll weigh in, please.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, I think now I really am confused, okay, because it was advertised as using that money for neighborhood expansion, and that's why everybody is here, and now kind of changing the rules in the middle of the game that we want to take that money and use it for commercial properties, which were not... They were not on this agenda at all to talk about that. And I thank Commissioner Langdon for bringing up the fact that those parcels were said to be 90% funded already, so they're well on their way to going where they need to go, whereas the neighborhood expansion isn't... Doesn't have anything towards it yet unless we approve this. But my big concern is, as the city attorney pointed out, is it was not advertised to take money from one pot and put it into another pot.
was not advertised to take money from one pot and put it into another pot. So I'm concerned about that.
Thank you. I will speak also. Design, when you're at a 90%, your 100% is already sitting there in the kitty. You're just at the 90% mark. So if all three of them are in design, the money is there for them to be completed. So taking something and changing around to the heading of it, I can't agree to either. To me, that $475,000 isn't necessary to complete the design. That money is sitting there already. So that's just putting it in there and having an excess. And to me, that's a waste. So yeah, nah, I can't go with changing it up right now. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, and I will disagree with the premise that it's an either/or. And in my book, it is an either/or because we don't have a finite pot of money. And if you're using a half a million dollars for neighborhood expansion with really, what I'm hearing from my fellow Commissioners, no intention of moving forward with construction until grants come through or we reduce the cost to citizens, what's the point of putting in the $500,000? And City Manager, correct me if I misunderstood, but you said that we would have to come up with 10% of the cost to finish the design to get it to the 100% of the commercial properties.
I believe those funds are already committed, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll ask Jennifer Derocher or Michael Vulo to talk about where we're at with the funding for the remaining...
Commercial properties.
Completing the design for the commercial properties.
Yes. Good evening, Jennifer Derocher, Assistant Utilities Director. Sumter Boulevard is already on retainer to get 100%. We're about 90 right now. We should be 100 by the end of June. Toledo Blade is in the CIP for next year to be funded currently with the American Rescue Fund money, but it could be turned out to be CIP or a different fund if that turns out, based on the previous direction. I believe it was about a month ago, that's what we were told to do. And I believe the Warmail Springs project is being designed right now. That is a parks project, and I believe they were at 90% about a month ago as well. So that one is totally on a purchase order to a firm as well.
Panacea is about the only one that is, it would come, future funding would come sometime in the future.
But we haven't had the discussion about the American Rescue Funds at all.
Correct.
We have not had any of that discussion.
I know, that's why we're putting together a budget of projects and proposed funding sources.
We could divert this funding if we created a new agenda item, if that is the will of the Board. So thank you for that clarification. I'm finished, thank you.
Vice Mayor, your light's on.
Yeah. We still moving on with this motion in voting, or?
She hasn't pulled it off the floor.
Because I'll drop my second if you drop your motion, because I have a different motion.
I'll remove my motion.
Okay. So may I make a motion now?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right. I move to deny work assignment 2021-09 with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $474,796 for neighborhood expansion. $474,796 for neighborhood... I wasn't done yet. Second, second, second. For neighborhood expansion, Blue Ridge, Salford North, Phase 1 Design. Now I'm done.
Second.
There we go.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner McDowell to deny the work assignment 2021-09 with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $474,796,000 for neighborhood expansion, Blue Ridge, Salford, Phase 1, North, Phase 1 Design. Anything to that, Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Anything to that, Commissioner McDowell?
Nope.
Okay, so I'm going to call the vote. And this is denying. So if you're going to approve the denial, it will be a yes. If you do not approve of the denial, it will be a no, so that people are not confused.
That was my strategy.
It is confusing, a lot of stuff goes on. And that motion fails three to two. Do any who have dissented?
Make a motion?
Yes, do any of the dissenters want to state anything?
I will.
I think I had been pretty clear before. I think that approving the design project keeps Northport in the game. We can qualify for funding. I will be hard-pressed to approve any construction projects if we don't address the items that I detailed earlier.
Okay. Commissioner White, you have the floor.
Yes, Commissioner Langdon is correct. We need to know what the figures are going to be, and we can only do that if we have a plan in place to do this, to approve this work assignment. And my understanding is the money for this has already been committed with the surtax. And...
Did you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve work assignment 2021-09 with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $474,796,000 for the neighborhood expansion, Blue Ridge, Salford North, Phase 1 Design.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to approve the work order, or the work assignment, 2021-09 with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $774,796,000 for neighborhood expansion, Blue Ridge, Salford North, Phase 1 Design. Anything to that, Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Langdon?
No.
All right, please vote. And that passes three to two. All right, anyone want to speak? I mean, I want to speak to that.
I will.
And what I will state is that the money was already there. It's not using anything. It's not taking away from the commercial. It's not taking away from anything. So, and it doesn't cost anything until, because this is just step one. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I dissented because there's no guarantee we're going to get a grant. There's no guarantee on any of this. And to me, we just took $500,000 and flushed it right down the toilet. And to have this kind of money being spent on something with so many unknowns is just irresponsible, in my opinion. And we have other projects that need this surtax funding, and that is within the Utilities Department for the commercial, to be able to get the construction started, the design finished, construction started. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
Okay. All right, we will go on to item 21-0788, and that is discussion of possible action regarding a veto request letter to Governor DeSantis. Interim City Manager, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner McDowell has requested this item, and I'm going to refer to her.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so I am the Commission's representative for Minnesota League of Cities, and it was brought to our attention, there is a bill sitting on the Governor's desk. Well, not quite on his desk, but really close to being submitted and being placed on his desk. The minute it's on his desk, the clock starts ticking. He has 14 days to sign it or veto it. And this bill, 403, is a House bill regarding home-based businesses. And in general, what this bill is, is basically saying, hey, City of Northport, your codes and your ordinances to protect residential neighborhoods is no longer going to be valid. That if a resident wants, your neighbor wants to start a mechanic shop next to you, there's nothing the city can do about it. If your neighbor wants to have a 24-hour gym, there's nothing the city can do about it. If your neighbor wants to start a, I don't know, I'll throw it out there, a fireworks company, there's nothing the city can do about it. We have codes and ordinances in place for the peaceful enjoyment of residences and to protect commercial properties so that they can do their commercial work in the commercial districts and let the residents have their peaceful enjoyment of their homes. This will absolutely violate our home rule authority. So with that said, I have attached a letter to Governor DeSantis. I did notice that there is a typo in it, the very first one. It says "vetoer." That would need to be corrected. And the sooner we get this to the Governor and to everybody that's listed as the copies to be sent to, the better off we will be.
Thank you very much. I'm going to speak to this. I sat in the same meeting and listened to Scott Dudley. And wow, just wow. The preemption that they do to us at that state level, especially this year when COVID didn't allow people to go in and speak to them. And they tore local government apart. I appreciate you bringing this forward, Commissioner McDowell. And it's something that I feel vitally necessary. Some of the background that I heard prior to that meeting is it passed in the Senate. It was a House bill, and it passed in the Senate 19 to 18. But three senators were sitting there and never voted. And that's against the rules. If you're in there, you are to vote. So there was a point of order given, but by the time they could get everything together, the bill had been rushed over to the House. And so the Senate asked for the bill to come back so they could redo the vote and have everybody vote on it. The House refused. That alone, to me, is just deplorable. Not playing right, but their bill was going to the Governor, and they weren't going to allow it to be redone. So that is why the veto vote, or veto by the Governor, is the only thing that's going to stop this. And not only is it a bad idea and it just preempt home rule like crazy, it wasn't even done right during the voting process. So I have a huge issue with it. I would bring up, Commissioner McDowell, the very opening of it. It says, "Since 1959, the City of Northport leaders." I'm wondering if we could change that to "since 1969, when home rule became a part of our state constitution." Northport leaders have successfully balanced. Because we are talking about home rule, we couldn't really impose our own zoning until we had the ability to have home rules. So I know we were established in '59, but '69 is when we really could set up our own zoning without the state.
Yeah, and the only reason why I put 1959 is because we did have ordinances, rules, regulations, and stuff in place when we became a city. If you would like, maybe we just take the year off and just start it. The City of Northport's leaders have successfully balanced and go on from there and just take the date off.
That's fine with me.
That way then it doesn't look like we're younger than what we actually are, and it doesn't get into why did we miss 10 years? So...
Okay.
Good point there, thank you.
Anybody else with a comment on the letter?
No, I support it.
Naughty legislators.
I'm going to just also add, if there's any residents that are still watching this, you folks can also get involved and send in this request to veto because if you have one of those businesses that I used as an example popping up next door to you, you won't be able to call the city to help you keep your peaceful enjoyment of your home. And I'll tell you what, your state isn't going to do a darn thing about it. So our hands will be tied behind our back and under our feet and above our head all at the same time. And this is absolutely horrible. So I hope that you will get involved and contact the Governor and send in a request for veto also.
Can I ask what, because you were at that meeting, what prompted this bill? I mean, why would they, I don't have any understanding.
They have been trying to strip the ability for us for a long time.
It has to do with zoning.
And generally, what they do is try to preserve the HOAs and exempt them. But depending upon how the HOA papers are drawn up, this could even go into HOAs. They're not even exempt depending upon how their papers of, you know, of design is put together. So it doesn't even save the HOAs.
And do you know who was the author of that bill?
I have it in my, here, maybe it's on this. I don't know exactly who started it, but it passed the House and Senate really with very few changes. I know the Florida League of Cities went in to try and come up with a compromise bill, and that compromise bill passed, and then it got stripped. So I don't know. I just hope our Governor is going to take a hard look at the veto letters, and it's important that we get this in so that Florida League of Cities can do their lobbying on our behalf.
What they want to do is walk into the Governor's office with a stack of letters like this and put it on his desk and say, look at these. Commissioner Langdon?
Yes, I'm wondering if you're ready for a motion.
Sure, I am.
Okay. I move to authorize the City Manager and Mayor to sign a veto request letter with the changes noted to Governor DeSantis regarding House Bill 403 related to the regulation of home-based businesses by local governments.
What about the changes?
You said what the changes made, but we didn't get a consensus.
As discussed, do you have them?
Would you read that back for us, so I can ask for a second, please?
To authorize the City Manager and Mayor to sign a veto request letter with the noted changes to Governor DeSantis regarding House Bill 403 related to the regulation of home-based businesses by local governments.
All right, thank you. That motion is made by Commissioner Langdon, and seconded by Commissioner McDowell.
Can I speak to it first?
Oh, of course.
To make sure the City Manager fully has the direction of the Board to... Can we get a consensus, or should we do an amendment to state what those changes are? Because we didn't really get a consensus of the Board to make those changes. So I'll make an amendment.
Please.
Make an amendment to, the changes would be including the word "veto" instead of "vetoer," and start the first paragraph with, "The City of Northport's leaders have successfully balanced," et cetera.
There's an amendment on the floor to correct the word "veto" instead of "vetoer" under "regarding to," and then beginning the first paragraph with "the City of Northport's leaders." Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner White. Let's go ahead and vote for the amendment. That passes five to zero. And then on to the motion as amended, please.
It's been cleared?
It's still clearing.
Okay.
And that passes five to zero.
Thank you, City Manager and City Attorney, for understanding the importance of this. I appreciate your help.
Thank you very much for bringing it forward. It's vitally important. City Manager, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
City Attorney?
No, ma'am.
City Clerk?
No.
Is there anything pressing on the Commission at this point? All right, it is 8:50, and we are adjourned.